Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for your attention and we are calling the Board of Commissioners of Rutherford County to order. And tonight Commissioner Coggan will lead us in prayer and then following that Commissioner Daniels will lead us in the pledge.
Our most gracious and heavenly Father, we humbly approach your throne this evening, God, thanking you for this day that you have given us to live for you, Father. Father God, we thank you for life. Father, you are the source of our life and the source of our peace. We praise your name forever. You are the way, the truth, and the light. Father God, tonight give us understanding that puts end to strife. Give us mercy that quenches hatred and forgiveness that overcomes vengeance. May we all live, God, forever in your love because of your son, Jesus Christ. And it's in his name that we pray. Amen.
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
Okay, they asked the clerk to please call the roll.
Mr. Schaefer?
Here.
Commissioner Black. Commissioner Jordan. Jordan. Commissioner P. Commissioner Cook. Commissioner Jernigan. Commissioner Farley.
Here.
Commissioner Williams.
Here.
Commissioner Sandlin.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Sparks.
Here.
Commissioner Hall.
Here.
Commissioner Jordan.
Here.
Commissioner Rogers.
Here.
Commissioner Coggan.
Here.
Commissioner Bullen.
Here.
Commissioner Phillips.
Commissioner McAdoo.
Commissioner Ely.
Here.
Commissioner Gooch.
Here.
Commissioner Daniel.
Here.
Twenty present, sir.
Thank you. You have before you a copy of the minutes of the last meeting. Commissioner Farley.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I make a motion. We approve the minutes as mailed.
Any corrections or additions? All in favor of that, please say aye. Any opposed? That motion is unanimous. Now, the first item on the agenda is to recognize Senator Bill Ketron and he's going to be making a presentation of a check to the Rutherford County Archives. Senator Ketron. Along with Representative Carr, I see here. All right.
Well, thank you very much, Mayor Burgess, members of the county commission. It's an honor and a pleasure for Representative Joe Carr and myself to be here tonight. We do have a small check that we would like to present. If we could ask Mr. John Lodel, the Rutherford County Archivist, to join us up here at the at the well. Mr. Mayor, members of the county commission, this check was sent for us to make this presentation to the Tennessee State Library and Archives has recently awarded direct grants to local government archives, which would be the archives here in Rutherford County. This is a check for $2,118. So it's, as a former member of this body, I would like to just make one comment for for the folks that are here tonight. The purpose of us giving this check tonight is to not forget where we come from. And I think that's important of why you people are here tonight. And I think it's because you're concerned about not only our community, our county, our state, and well as our government. We should not forget where we come from. So it's with great pleasure that Representative Carr and myself, on behalf of our Secretary of State Trey Hargit, present this check for $2,018 for maintaining the history of our fine county of Rutherford.
Thank you, sir. Thanks, Mike Rutherford.
Great, great. Okay, thank you Senator Ketron and Representative Carr. And as always, we thank John Lodel, our archivist, for the great job that he does and we appreciate that assistance with that work of program there. Okay, next we want to recognize Commissioner Schaefer and he has two resolutions of recognition.
It's my pleasure tonight to, for this county commission, to honor and recognize two young gentlemen from our high schools. They both go to Laverne High School. It's an honor for Laverne that they were both state champions in track and field this spring here in Murfreesboro. It's also an honor for our county to have two state champions. And I'm gonna ask them both if they'd come forward now with their families. First is Jarkeith Ruffin and his family. And the other is Terry Hodges and he lives a little bit further away than Jarkeith does and coming down Interstate 24 and then turning onto Church Street was a dead stop. So hopefully he'll be here after a bit and he wasn't caught in the accident. But as I said, we have a resolution of recognition for each of these two fine young gentlemen. And I'll read Jarkeith first. And I would ask you just to hold your applause till after both of them. Whereas Laverne freshman Jarkeith Ruffin recently won the Class AAA Discus State Title with a throw of 156 feet, 2 inches. And whereas this was the result of many hours of practice and hard work. And whereas Jarkeith's mother and stepfather are Sharon and Johnny Rudolph and his father was the late Keith Allen Young. And whereas he was the top thrower in all divisions in the state meet and was followed by his teammate Dion McAdoo, who finished runner-up. Whereas in addition to excelling as an athlete, Jarkeith's favorite subject in school is English. His favorite sport is football and he is a member of the Lake Providence Missionary Baptist Church. Whereas he hopes to graduate from high school and college and hopefully become a professional athlete or a professional in the criminal justice field. Now therefore be it resolved that the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners at its regular session on this seventh day of June 2010 does hereby extend our congratulations to Jarkeith Ruffin on winning the Class AAA Discus State Title and we wish him much success and happiness in all his future endeavors. And Terry hasn't made it yet, but I asked their coach, Al Evans. Jarkeith, as I said, was ju- he's just a freshman, so he's got a chance to win three more Discus titles. The ne- this next gentleman, he's been up here before. Maybe that's why he decided to get held up in traffic, you know, when it was standing. But Terry has won several state championships and this year was the first time of the triple jump that he won. The resolution. Whereas Laverne senior Terry Hodges recently won his first Class A Triple Jump State Title at Dean Hayes Stadium, leaping 49 feet, 7 and 3/4 inches, just 2 and 1/4 inches shy of tying the state meet record and one of the 10 top jumps in the nation this year. Whereas in addition to winning the state title in the triple jump, he also came in third in the long jump and ran the 100 meters in 10.6 seconds in the state preliminaries and injured his leg on the 4x100 relay in the state meet. Whereas his accomplishments are the result of many hours of practice and hard work. Whereas Terry's track and field career at the state level includes placing third in the long jump his freshman and senior years. He was state champion in the long jump his sophomore year and was the state champion in the long jump and runner-up in the triple jump his junior year. And whereas in his sophomore and senior year, he competed in four events at the state level and was named the Daily News Journal's Male Athlete of the Year recently. And whereas Terry is the son of Pamela Phelps and attends Boyce Street Missionary Baptist Church. Now therefore be it resolved that the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners at its regular session on this 17th day of June 2010 does hereby extend our congratulations to Terry Hodges on winning the Class A Triple Jump State Title and on his many accomplishments, we wish him much success and happiness in all his future endeavors.
Would you make that a formal motion on both of those, please? This resolution?
For him, yes.
Uh, okay. Are you, okay. Whenever you get to that, all right. All right, go ahead, let in.
Trying to figure out how to do them both together. But I'd like, Coach Evans would like to just say a few words about these two young men.
As a coach for over 30 years, I've learned a lot of things about adolescent youth and about their ability to accomplish the goals that they want to accomplish. And a lot of times it's not necessarily the size of the athlete, but it's the size of the heart of the athlete. Sometimes you can't see that from the outside, but the two young men that competed at the state level, it was definitely evident. Jarkeith was pushed by teammate Dion McAdoo. And throughout the whole season, these young men went back and forth, back and forth as far as their abilities. And the great thing about it was that both of end up on the podium as number one and number two. Very seldom does that ever happen where one school at the top level has the ability to put out two of the best athletes within a few feet of each other. And this is a great accomplishment. But a lot of this is not due to because of my ability as a coach, but it's the ability of the parents behind the young athlete. And it's great to know that we have some great parents behind these kids that help them along the way. Don't push them, they help them. They give them support they need and that's what I appreciate by the parents being there to help them so much. Terry's a little bit late tonight. There was a little bit of a traffic jam and some problems on the road and hopefully he'll be here in a few minutes. But this young man, Terry Hodges, as I had mentioned in the newspaper, was a once-in-a-lifetime athlete where a young man always give you the answer of, yes, sir, I can do it. Never no, I can't, never hesitation, always the ability. And the great thing about it was this, the young man had heart. He had got on his team and you can't go wrong that way. And I appreciate what each one of the parents have done and what these young men have done as far as athletic ability. One short story real quick about Terry. We came back from meet, it was over at Brentwood, Terry had won several events. At this particular meet, they gave away T-shirts. When we got back to the school building, I had all the kids on the bus and I was talking to them. I tell them, there's a lot bigger things in life sometimes than athletics. We have a young lady who's dying of cancer at our school. Terry immediately said, Coach, I've got one of my T-shirts here. The whole team will sign it and we'll take it down to the ball field and we'll give it to her. Now that's heart. That's a real athlete, that's a real person, that's a creation of God. And I appreciate each and one of y'all that are here tonight. I know you're here for a lot of other reasons too, but I appreciate my small moment I've got here to tell you what a great school we have at Laverne High School, great athletes that we have here and great parents. Thank you.
That's, that story that Coach Evans just told moved me the first time I heard it, did it again tonight. I should, and it's truly a good story and it's true and it's touched many people's hearts up there. So in conclusion, be it further resolved that a copy of these resolutions of recognition be forwarded to Terry Hodges and Jarkeith Ruffin by the clerk of this legislative body. Mr. Chairman, move for approval.
Second by Commissioner, several people. P, all right, everyone in favor of that, please say aye. Aye. Thank you very much. Congratulations to you Jarkeith and Mr. Hodges. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, the next item on the agenda is public comments. And I want to make a few introductory remarks here before we start public comments. I wanted to distinguish between this and a public hearing. This is not a public hearing. The commission has adopted a procedure some years ago that allows at every one of our commission meetings, for anyone that wishes to speak about any particular subject, we set aside 30 minutes for that and each person that speaks is allowed up to three minutes. And you'll see on our podium up here that we do have a device that when the green light is on, you have, it'll stay on for 2 minutes and 50 seconds, then the yellow light comes on and then it goes red. We are going to ask you respectfully to limit your discussions to, and your comments to three minutes and I will hold you accountable for that. One other thing I must point out, we have to take these requests in the order we receive them to make public comments and it's clear we have substantially more people than we'll have time to fit into our schedule. Next, we also have a part of this public comment period that those people that are speaking to items that are on the agenda have priority. So I will have to let those two people who have wished to speak, have requested to speak with respect to those items that are on our agenda tonight, they will get first opportunity to, then we'll go to the others. And I will remind everyone that most of the people that wish to speak, it's about an item, an issue that is not on our agenda and we will not be taking any vote on that particular issue because there's nothing on our agenda to address. Saying all of that to say we're, and I want to remind you also, if you look at your agendas, that the public hearings that we do have scheduled for tonight, there are three of them, they must start at 6:30. So according to my time and Mr. Robertson can confirm this, it's approximately 6:21 right now. We have nine minutes before we have to stop the public comment period and go to the public hearing that are scheduled, those three public hearings. Now, if you, if you people do not wish to participate in an orderly and respectful manner, we will ask you to be excused. It's just that simple. We're here to listen to your public comments and that's what we're going to do, but you're going to-
Shut up, sir.
Sir, I'd like for those of you that are respectful to find a way to help those that are not be respectful or else we'll have to empty the room. I'm sorry, we're not trying to do anything except do what we do at every meeting in a respectful way. You will have your opportunity to speak. This is the way we have put our agenda in place. It's decades old and we're gonna stay with it. We will get the full 30 minutes, absolutely. Now, and when people are speaking, I don't expect outburst uproars or boos or clapping. Just sit there respectfully like you would if you're in your church pew for the most part, okay? I mean, that's all we're asking, is just treat us all like you want to be treated yourself. And there's no other agenda here. Now-
Mayor, just to clarify, we're gonna have public comments until 6:30, then we have the public hearing, then we'll come back at public comment and finish up the 30 minutes, correct?
Yes, sir. Absolutely. It's what we're going to do. We always start our public hearings at 6:30. We have held to that rigidly. I have been reminded of that routinely, repetitively. Okay, all right, so Mr., are we ready, Mr. Robertson? It's roughly 6:23. I took three minutes of that, but you're gonna still have seven minutes now and 23 minutes later. The first person to speak is Mr. Steve Schrader.
Ladies and Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, neighbors, I'm Steve Schrader, a member of the Rutherford Neighborhood Alliance and I also live at 676 Cottonfield Lane in Mr. Farley's district. Tonight, the Steering Committee will be presenting a resolution to adopt the 2010 Private Act for County Attorney and to approve the Legal Services Agreement. Recall that previously several commissioners had commented on some of the details in the language of the Legal Services Agreement. The issue had to do with the need for the commission to have the approval of the county attorney for various procedures. The Legal Services Agreement that's before you has several such instances. The first is in Section 2, last paragraph, line 6. The use of outside counsel requires, quote, "the recommendation of the county mayor with the advice, approval, and consent of the county attorney," end quote. There is similar language in Section 3, Paragraph 2, Line 11, and Section 6, excuse me, Section 5, Item H, Line 4. The RNA wants the county's business controlled by officials elected by the people, such as the mayor and members of the commission, not by appointees. The RNA certainly agrees that it is prudent and appropriate for the county to seek the advice of county attorney on an as required basis. However, if you look carefully at this language, I believe you will see that the mayor will not be able to recommend an outside counsel for your approval without the approval and consent of the county attorney. It's not clear why the county needs approval and consent of an appointed official to conduct the county's business. The proposed language from the Steering Committee means that the county attorney, an appointed official, has veto authority over the mayor and the commission. The commission will only have the authority to say yea or nay as to the recommendation. If you decline the recommendation, then the decision on who to hire for outside counsel still resides with the county attorney because of the approve and consent language. The 2010 Private Act for County Attorney states in Section 2, quote, "Rutherford County may enter such additional written agreements with private attorneys and law firms for the provision of additional legal services as the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners may deem appropriate," end quote. It does not say, quote, "as the county attorney may deem appropriate," end quote, which in essence is the language that you are considering tonight in the Legal Services Agreement. We ask that you, the commission, evaluate the proposed Legal Services Agreement as a dilution of the commission and the voters' authority prior to your vote. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Mrs. Schrader. Next will be Mrs. Susan Allen.
Good evening. My name is Susan Allen and I live on Nelson Lane in Murfreesboro in Commissioner Ely's district. I'm the current president of the Rutherford Neighborhood Alliance and I really appreciate the opportunity to speak to you tonight. On May 5th, the RNA sent you information regarding the Legal Services Agreement. Our intent was to provide information to serve as a basis of your discussion tonight if you opt to adopt a Legal Services Agreement rather than continue with the current agreement with Mr. Cop and his law firm. We hope you have found our suggestions and comments to be worthy of consideration. Steve Schrader has already shared one of our concerns with you tonight. We have pored over the agreement since the beginning of January and done a fair amount of research regarding contracts and county attorneys and even met with our county human resources director about how a full-time county legal department would be established. Even with all this study, one section of the Legal Services Agreement has escaped our understanding. Section 5, under General Matters, Paragraph G, states, quote, "No member of the governing body of Rutherford County and no other officer, employee, or agent of the same who exercises any functions or responsibilities in connection with carrying out of the activities and work to which this contract pertains shall have any personal interest, direct or indirect, in this agreement." We don't understand what this means. We assume the Steering Committee would not have unanimously approved this agreement if they didn't understand all of it and we would appreciate it if any, or preferably all of you, Commissioner Jordan, Commissioner Rogers, Commissioner Coggan, Commissioner Phillips, Commissioner Black, Commissioner Farley, Commissioner Sandlin, would explain it when you discuss the Legal Services Agreement. Please be sure also that the agreement complies with the new 2010 Private Act for County Attorney. Thank you for your time and the effort that you put into serving the people of Rutherford County.
Thank you, Mrs. Allen. Okay, next we have Mr. Kevin Fisher. You have three minutes.
We enjoy many basic freedoms in this beloved country, freedoms which so many have sacrificed and died in defense of. We can live as we see fit, worship as we see fit, and we guarantee these rights to anyone blessed to be born here in this great land of the free. President Lincoln described our system of government as being of, by, and for the people. The government then is beholden to its citizens and not vice versa. You elected officials, county commission, the mayor, you're beholden to these people sitting here in the audience, the people in the balcony, people outside, the people that are at home. You're beholden to them. The law's been broken. These people have a right to be present when the laws are made, when decisions are made by this great body and clearly the law's been broken. I've petitioned the Tennessee Department of Treasury, the Comptroller's Office, to enforce their laws because the law's been broken. The law is very clear. It says, "Notice must reasonably describe the purpose of the meeting or the action proposed to be taken. Additionally, notice must be posted at a time sufficient in advance of the meeting in order to give the citizens an opportunity to become aware of and attend the meeting." Mr. Mayor, Planning Commission, these people don't want this mosque built in this area. They have a right to be present when the law, when the decision is made and clearly they weren't allowed to have a say. They weren't allowed to be present. So what I'm calling on is for construction of this mosque to be halted, to have a meeting so that these people here, these taxpaying citizens, have a chance to have, to have their say. There are many issues that are, that need to be raised. They need to conduct the traffic flow. When World Outreach was built, they had to jump through hoops to ensure that all adequate measures were taken to ensure that traffic would flow on an orderly basis. That hasn't been done. This group we know nothing about. The long and short of it, regardless of whether you support the mosque, as some people do, or whether you're opposed to it, as citizens in this great state, as citizens of this beloved country, you have a constitutional right to be present when these decisions are made. And I'm calling on you Planning Commission, I'm calling on the mayor to intervene and to declare the May 24th hearing null and void in accordance with state law 844-105. Let these people have a chance to have their say.
Ladies and gentlemen, we've asked you to be respectful and we've asked you not to join in with opposition or support for a particular person that's speaking. This is just going to be part of your time that you're using up. I respectfully ask you just to restrain yourself. Now, it's 6:30 and past a little. We've used seven minutes of the public comment time. You will have 23 more minutes later. Now, I have to, before I, let's go to the public hearings and the first public hearing is for a conditional use permit, Request 10-A006 from All American Contracting, located at 9536 Shelbyville Highway. Existing zoning is transportation. This is conditional use permit for industrial equipment storage on a site of approximately 3.03 acres and Mr. Demossi will describe that in more detail.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you and good evening, Mayor, members of the commission, excuse me. As you stated, the property is located on Shelbyville Highway. The applicant's proposing to build a little bit over 1,100 square foot prefabricated metal building on the site. The new building and existing gravel area will be used to store industrial equipment such as forklifts, backhoes, and trailers. The applicant would also like to park his delivery trucks onsite. The building they're constructing will not contain an office or bathroom and no employees will actually work on the site and the building will not be open for walk-in customers. The BZA did grant a variance to this particular request at their April 14th meeting to allow the parking area to remain gravel as long as the activity there was limited to private commercial storage only. commercial storage only. This property was rezoned to transportation and granted a conditional use permit for mini warehouses back in September of 1999. The site plan was actually approved for 15 mini storage buildings in August of 2000, but none were ever constructed. The main distinction between what the applicant's proposing and what is currently allowed is the need for the outside storage, which is prohibited in our zoning resolution. Surrounding area does contain properties owned retail, wholesale trade, industrial, services, and R-15. The property directly to the north was rezoned to services to allow a drive-in movie theater and gas station, but they were never constructed. And to the south, about 1,000 feet, is a property zone for retail wholesale trade for the repair and sale of industrial and farm equipment. There was a fair amount of discussion about this at the Planning Commission meeting. Most of the discussion revolved around whether or not screening was going to be provided or not. The site plan will be required for this, and it will be required to meet our new landscaping regulations, which were approved just a few months ago. Also, there was a discussion about the number of pieces and the type of equipment that would be placed onsite. The Planning Commission did make a recommendation that no more than 50 pieces of equipment would be stored onsite, and all the equipment had to be operational. The Planning Commission did recommend approval of this application by unanimous vote, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of Mr. Demossi before we have the public hearing? Okay, thank you, Mr. Demossi. Okay, now, we will declare the public hearing open for this conditional use permit request 10-A006. If there's anyone present that wishes to speak for or against this application, please come forward and give us your name and address and make your comments to us. Is there anyone present that wishes to speak for or against this application? Is anyone in the room that, is the applicant in the room? I don't know whether they are or not. Okay, I don't see anyone coming forward to speak, therefore, we're going to declare the public hearing closed. And is there a motion concerning this request? Commissioner Williams?
The only concern that I have, or some, or some people that have called me about this, are the numbers on outside storage. Initially, outside, when this was approved, no outsor, no outside storage was allowed for the property now that, for the mini storage, so that was the only concern. So I would like to make a motion to approve this with a reduction in the number of outside pieces to 30 as opposed to 50. With all the other requirements in place.
All right, do we have a second? Commissioner Johnson, we have a motion to accept, to approve this request, and with all the conditions that came forward from the Planning Commission, with the exception of changing the 50 pieces of equipment to be stored onsite to reduce that to 30 pieces. Is that clear? That's your motion, correct? All right, is there any other discussion? Any other discussion? If there's no discussion, then, all of you in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the record reflect, it's unanimous. Next, we have a rezoning and conditional use permit request 10-A007, Wilco Hess LLC, located on Capital Way. Existing zoning is industrial. C-2 and R-15, and proposed zoning is industrial with a conditional use permit for a truck stop, convenience market, gas station, and a restaurant on a site of approximately 12.3 acres. Mr. Demossi.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. As you stated, this piece of property is located along Epsom Road and at the intersection of Epsom and Capital Way, right off the Bacchanan Interchange. The applicant is proposing to build a 24-hour travel plaza facility with convenience market and restaurants. They're proposing a 12,000-square-foot building with accompanying gas and diesel pumps to be constructed on the property. There is a conceptual site plan located in your agenda packets, but I will point you to the larger site plan that is on your tables, and I see that several of you have gotten that out. I'll refer to that in just a moment. Just for a little background of the zoning of this property, back in 1971, an area containing roughly 170 acres around the Bacchanan Interchange was rezoned to commercial. Back in, then, in 85, an area containing about 47 acres, including a portion of the property in question, was rezoned to industrial. However, there was still a little bit of commercial zoning and also a small smidgen, if you will, of R-15. Really, the reason that came about is because when they did the original zoning back in 71, they just pretty much did an area, said, you know, this many feet this way, this many feet that way. It wasn't really, at the time, there were no property lines. The subdivision plat which created this particular subdivision, Capital Way, was recorded back in 2004, and the surrounding area does include properties owned industrial, commercial, retail, wholesale trade, transportation, and R-15. This area is classified as an interstate mixed-use node in the Christiana Bacchanan Land Use Study. The intent of this note is to allow uses which support interstate and commuter-type customers with services such as convenience markets, auto service repair, and restaurants, which this is pretty consistent with. The concept plan that was submitted had a number of issues that needed to be addressed. The site plans you have before you, this particular site actually is served by sewer from the city of Murfreesboro, so the plan also has to meet City of Murfreesboro requirements. What I have before you, before you on the tables today is actually the site plan that was considered at the Murfreesboro Planning Commission meeting yesterday. There were a number of changes that they requested, one of them being a right turn lane from Port, well, along Miller, I'm sorry, not Miller, Epsom Road to Capital Way. That was an item that was also discussed at length at the Planning Commission, but the city has also required that on their site plan as well. There were some other issues that we had, and this is going to be before our Planning Commission at the end of this month, on the June 29th meeting, so we're in the process of doing our review. The, one of the issues that we had on this concept plan in the agenda packet was the lot coverage. It was over 80 percent, which is the maximum lot coverage for commercial areas. They have reduced that to about 65 percent or so, and the site does appear to be in good order, but again, we will be considering this at the June 29th Planning Commission meeting, provided a good zoning approval today. I believe that was the primary comments that we received at the public hearing that we had at the Planning Commission. With that, again, the Planning Commission did recommend a favor of this, recommended approval, and I'll be happy to answer any questions. And I believe, is there, yeah, there's some applicant is here to, to answer any questions as well.
Questions of Mr. Demossi. Mr. Sandlin?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. One of the questions in Planning Commission that we had asked is from the state, I guess, point of view, coming off onto that exit there, the narrowness that it is, the, the turn lane that you're, that's required now, is, does it go all the way up to the, I guess, the, the edge of the ramp where it comes to off the interstate, which is still state-controlled?
Right, not all the way to the ramp, but it's, if you look at the site plan, let me just get mine out real quick here. It doesn't go all the way to the ramp, but there is, from the taper, then the storage length, there's about 380, 400 feet between where the taper length begins and then where the turnoff is. So that's, that's a pretty good amount of storage space there for cars who, or trucks that are coming off that interchange and are just going right into the, into the Capital Way. Something else to notice on that site plan, I don't know if you've noticed that or not, but the first entrance there, you see that there's three different entrances on Capital Way. The first entrance is marked as passenger vehicles only, and you can see there's kind of a little separation of the site. The first part really is the convenience market and the, the restaurant that'll be there, drive-in area, a drive-through area, rather, and the proposed gas canopy pumps for the cars. There's a fair amount of separation between that and the back part of the site, which is where the tractor-trailers will be required, the, those back two exits or entrances to the property. That'll be theirs. They won't be able to use this particular, that first entrance right there, that'll just be for cars.
So then, this turn lane that's required now is going to help this Miller Road from the other, actually, truck facility right there, being able to come out and go right?
Well, it looks, well, if they're coming out of Miller Road and just turning to the right, yeah, it's not, you can see, it doesn't actually go all the way to Miller. If someone's trying to come off of Miller and turn right, that, the road will just be the way it is today.
But the concerns that the Planning Commission had on 24, that, that triangle right there where there were issues, did, has the state made any comments or any directions on that?
Not that I'm aware of at this point. Now, I will say, and we talked about this a little bit, the, at the Planning Commission, that this is actually an improvement that we've submitted to the state for them to look at, at, on the next long-range transportation plan. Now, they're still working through that process as far as ranking projects, so I don't know where this is going to fall, but it's something we recognize. But working with the city, we feel that this is a workable solution.
Any other questions of Mr. Demossi before we have the public hearing? Okay, thank you, Mr. Demossi. All right, we will declare the public hearing open with respect to this request, rezoning and conditional use permit request 10-A007. If you wish to speak for or against, come forward, give us your name and address, and make your comments, please.
Yes, good evening. My name is Kevin Gunther, working with Hudson Steel, Northwest Broad Street, Murfreesboro, Tennessee, and we just wanted to indicate we are here this evening to answer questions. I believe Mr. Demossi did a good job covering the issues of the site. Specifically, we've worked very hard at the traffic and the access to the site, and I think my understanding is that the city engineer, as well as the county staff, have looked carefully at, at the best scenario being to allow that right turn lane to be widened and giving us better access off the interstate before we turn into our site off the local road. We've also worked very hard at separating the, the car traffic from the truck traffic. We understand that we'll need to iron out any details that may come up with the state. But that being said, we're, owner is also here, Mr. Steve Williams, to answer any questions you have.
Okay. Does anyone else wish to speak? Does Mr. Williams wish to speak, or this is not a time for questions and answers, but we will allow him to speak if he'd like to.
Can I bring up a question right quick, then, since he's the engineer on the deal?
Okay, I'm gonna allow it.
Is there gonna be a light put there eventually or something? Because one of the concerns is still, like I was mentioning, that triangle right there, coming off the interstate on that ramp, going back left, you've got three truck stops at this exit, one across the interstate, and then two on this side. So you've got a lot of residents coming in and out of there, and they're having difficulty right now, is what I'm saying. And so the issue with that flowing better right there, I'm not a traffic engineer by any form or fashion, but the question's been raised, still not really comfortable about what's going to happen right there off that entrance ramp. I think this, this other lane right here is going to help get to this site, but what about the rest?
As far as the light goes and, and the interstate interchange, we really have to defer to the state on that, and traffic signals are, are something that are, you know, basically requested and provided when there's a certain level of traffic reached. So at this point in time, we're not, we're not in control of the light. What we have done, as you mentioned, is we've provided additional storage in the right turn lane, get people off that intersection and over to our site as quickly as possible without adding further complications.
Okay, is there anyone else that wishes to speak for or against this project? Anyone in the public wishes to make a comment? Okay, if no one else wishes to speak, then the public hearing is closed. Do we have a motion concerning this request? Commissioner Jernigan?
Before I make a motion to approve, I want to make sure on the planning, Rutherford County's planning section, where our planning department didn't recommend a plan, a turn lane, I'm gonna amend that to make sure the turn lane is put in there in the county's planning, because I won't be voting to approve it unless this turn lane is put in. I know he says Murfreesboro's give a design, but this is a county, and it's before the Rutherford County Commission and Rutherford County Planning Department, so I'm amending that to make sure a turn lane's put in there.
Okay, so you have a motion there that requires the development adhere to the non-residential community design guidelines of the Christiana Bacchanal Land Use Study, and the project shall also meet the City of Murfreesboro development standards, and you're adding to that, those two items, you're adding the requirement for the turn lane to be installed on the project?
Yes, sir.
Is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
Now, do we have a second? Commissioner Williams? Now, excuse me, I'm sorry, I'm, it's okay, I wasn't looking that way. We got a couple of seconds. All right, now, is there any other discussion about that? Any discussion on the motion on the floor to approve this project with the two requirements coming from the Planning Commission, along with the additional requirement to specifically spell out that a turn lane as identified will be installed?
Another thing I'd like to say before, one thing I'd like to add to it, Senator Tracy has been out there with the state people and looked at this interchange, and it is under consideration about the redesign. It wouldn't be a good idea to put no red light there, you couldn't, you'd have traffic backed up two or three miles down the interstate, so it'd have to be redesigned for you can do something like it, but the state has been out there. We went out there with them, and then they've looked at it and considered it on redesign on it.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other discussion? All of you in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Motion is unanimous. We have one other public hearing request, and this is a zoning resolution amendment, and this is to amend the borrow pit regulations. Mr. Demossi?
Yes, Mayor Burgess, thank you. As you stated, we have a resolution amendment before you today regarding borrow pits. Just in way of explanation, right now, what, and I'll define what a borrow pit is and get into all that, but what we're talking about is what we now consider as temporary resource extraction of materials from property, say dirt, rock, those kind of things. A lot of the times we'll run to properties in the county that they would like to engage in this kind of activity, to sell the material for development that's occurring, those kind of things. We don't really have any standard conditions for them. At this point, they're all required to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals for a Type II Conditional Use Permit, and pretty much as everyone goes to the Board of Zoning Appeals, they all get conditions as they're presented to the BZA. That does have the potential to create inconsistencies in enforcement and also regulation. So what staff has done is actually come up with some regulations that would regulate all borrow pits, and we define borrow pit by defining it as an area from which soil or other unconsolidated material is removed from a piece of property to be used without further processing, either onsite or offsite, as fill for activities such as landscaping, building construction, or highway construction and maintenance. That would be added to Section 2.02, which is in our definitions. We would also add a new section to Section 704, dealing specifically with borrow pits, that say that it is permitted in all districts with receipt of a Type II Conditional Use Permit, and there are a number of conditions, as you see there in your agenda materials, basically dealing with the amount of setback that has to be had, the amount of the land that can be used for the borrow pits depending on the size. I won't go through all of these, just to give you just a quick overview. Of course, if you have questions, I'll be more than happy to, to address those. We'd be working with our engineering department for a drainage and erosion control plan that would be submitted prior to any activities commencing. Road bond would have to be determined by the county engineer prior to commencement of any extraction. One of the big items that was really a discussion point at the, there was about two or three meetings where this was considered, had to do with the blasting, times of blasting, and you'll notice under number nine, there's specific times, depending on the time of year when blasting can occur, and excavation, actually, just excluding blasting would be, and hauling off material would be limited to the hours between sunrise and sunset. We also have placed time constraints on these. Basically, they'd be allowed, one sixth, they'd be allowed a six-month with a one-time, three-month extension that could be approved by the planning director. One other item that was of a fairly significant conversations at the meetings this was considered at, there was the concern of those particular items, or those particular extraction activities that were for the sole purpose of agricultural activities, such as someone who owns a farm, just digging up some material to bring it to another farm. The Planning Commission really would like, like to have seen those exempted, and currently they're not. Currently, we handle these all the same, but their number 15 there, we believe handles that. Basically, if it's for a sole purpose of agricultural activities, and it's not going to be sold, traded, whatever, to another party, they would be exempt from these provisions. Again, this, this was considered about two or three different meetings, and at this time, I think we're pretty comfortable with what we have. With any resolution amendment that we make, you know, we'll enforce it for a number of months, and if we feel it needs to be tweaked, we can always bring that back. But at this point, this has come to you with a unanimous recommendation for approval by the Planning Commission. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of Mr. Demossi on this? Mr. Williams?
The only concern that I have about this, and I don't see where it was been addressed, is during, in the road bond...
is during, in the road bond, the maintenance of the road when we get a lot of traffic out of a borrow pit. Typically, the borrow pits are very few trips, but we have several, particularly out in district that I'm in now, that have really worn the roads out. And we get so many complaints, and have one out on Winrow Road now, that it's a city project, and nobody seems to know who's going to provide the maintenance. And I was just by there today, and they have come back and patched some of the pretty deep holes that are in there, but I haven't seen that in there. So have you explored that? But I would like to see, maybe it's not the right time for this tonight, but at least to put in there where the maintenance of the road, when they're running all these trips, and they like 10, 15, 20 trips. So have I overlooked that being in there, or is that just kind of?
Yeah, I think it's, I think that would be covered as part of the road bond. I mean, we can always amend the language to make it a little clearer, just to say...
Well, I know it says in the road bond, but specifically address...
Who's going to maintain the road?
Who's going to maintain it, and who's going to oversee that? Because I know Joe Frank and them do a pretty good job about doing that, but we have several issues that it's kind of nobody's land out there. So I would like to see that specifically put in there for the road bond, that that would be covered for maintenance, as well as the repair of the road after you get through.
I think we could just make an amendment to number five, just, you know, the road bond for an amount to be determined by the county engineer shall be submitted prior to commencement of extraction activities, along with a maintenance plan of the road or something of that effect. I think that would take care of that.
Okay, we can address that when we get to a motion, if you choose to. Any other questions of Mr. Demosi? All right, thank you, then. We have to have the public hearing here. Is there anyone in the public that wishes to speak to the request for this resolution amended, the Rutherford County zoning resolution regarding borrow pit definition, et cetera? Borrow pit regulation, okay. Anyone wishing to speak? If so, I'm declaring the public hearing open. Please come forward. Okay. I don't believe anyone wishes to speak, so the public hearing is closed. Now, does anyone wish to make a motion regarding this request of this resolution amendment? Commissioner Farley and Commissioner Sparks, second. Now, is there other discussion? Mr. Williams, I mean, do you wish to add that language that we were talking about here, or how do you want to handle it?
Yeah, I'd like to amend Section 5. That was some discussion that was going on about there, but I don't believe that the maintenance part was put in there. So I'd like to amend what Mr. Demosi said about putting that in Section 5 to include the maintenance in the road bond.
All right, let's get that language in, we need a second. So you amended Section 5 to, in addition to what it says, what was your language on it, Mr. Demosi?
Extraction activities, I think we could just change it to say, "along with a maintenance plan." I think that would take care of it.
Shall be submitted along with a maintenance plan to be approved by the county engineer. Well, I'm sorry, I misread that.
Or Mr. Farley may want to put that in his motion, that's fine, too.
Mr. Farley, are you willing to add in your motion? What about the maker of the second? That was Mr. Sparks. Mr. Sparks, are you okay with adding that language in item number five that will require the addition of a...
... maintenance plan for the road.
And a maintenance plan to be submitted for the road? Mr. Robertson, have you got, made note of that properly? Okay, now you hear the motion to approve this with that one amendment to that item number five. Anyone else have any discussion? All of you in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the record reflect, it's unanimous. Mr. Demosi wants to make one announcement.
Yes, Mr. Mayor Burgess, thank you. I just want to let everybody who's present and also who's watching at home know, our comprehensive plan process is moving along. We are making very good progress. We're going to be having a steering committee meeting for the comprehensive plan this coming Monday, the 21st, at 6:00 PM. It's at the Rutherford County Board of Education Building, which is at 2240 South Park Drive. Basically, what we're going to be doing is looking at the base case growth scenarios, as well as the two alternate, alternative growth scenarios, along with their fiscal analysis. That information actually can be found on our website. If you'd like to go there, we have a link to that information there. And we hope as many people are able to make it do, and we're expecting that the steering committee will be endorsing one of the alternative land use scenarios at that time. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Jordan?
Before we go back into the rest of the public comments, could I ask how many people signed up for the public comments?
A total of 23 people.
Well, I know we've got a rule, suppose, and I don't know how hard and fast it is for only 30 minutes, but this whole group went to this much trouble, come out here in the middle of a thunderstorm, and I believe if they want to be heard, and they went to trouble to signing up, we ought to hear those 23 people. And I don't know if there's a motion in order for that or not, but I'll do it anyway. I'll make a motion to allow everybody that signed up to have up to their three minutes to speak. I know we all don't want to speak, we all don't want to be here all night, but they have a right to be heard, and they went to the trouble, they went through the system to sign up, and unless they give them the opportunity to be heard, and just, we'll just sit here a little longer and hear what they want to say.
What I need you to do is make a motion to suspend the rules that are in place to allow an extension of the 30-minute period to accommodate all of those that have signed up.
I'll make that motion.
And second from any number, Commissioner Black or Hall, et cetera, Spark. Okay. Any other discussion on that motion to suspend the rules? Mr. Shafer, do you wish to discuss that?
I assume that this also means it's non-precedent setting for, in the future necessarily. And number two is, it's also three minutes still for each person.
Yeah, this motion only suspends the rules for this meeting. They've already signed...
No.
Oh, well, I can read off, and they can line up if they want to, yes, in just a moment. First of all, this dispense of this motion. All of you in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that's unanimous. I'll read off.
Mr. Chairman. I think it would be prudent at this time if we either had county attorney or the planning director to kind of explain the process in that application that's being discussed so much, so the facts would actually be out there. And I know we've got some comment time left, but I think that application process and what, on the mosque, and what was related to that would kind of clear up some stuff that's been printed in the papers that wasn't actually correct, so...
All that would be true, Mr. Sandlin, but this is not an agenda item. This is simply a public comment period, and I'm going to rule that out of order, that request. All right, I'm going to read off the several people that have signed up, if they want to sign up, or they can all be quick to stand. Mr. Pete Doughty, Douaty, Jackie Archer, James Estes, Donald Todd, Lori Cordozza Moore, George Erdl, Jessica Garcia, Alan Jackson, Susan Habib, Karen Harold, Samir Almotti, Yvonne Smith, Bob Hayes, Foy Smith, David Allen, Scott Cozimoore, Roy Grady, Don Day, Ann McCormick, and Hunter McFarland. Mr. Pete Doughty, please come forward.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I do respectfully challenge your rule on that. I respect your opinion on that, but I think it would kind of clear up things a little bit on the front end instead of the back end. And whether the planning, the planning chairman, or not chairman, actually, the planning director would actually explain that process, or the attorney, I think it would help things greatly. And if...
You'll have to make a motion to overrule my ruling there. This is not on the agenda, I cannot allow it to happen.
I understand. I'll put that in form of a motion then.
Second by Mr. Johnson. Any discussion? All in favor? Let's just call the roll. Please call the roll. Oh, excuse me, cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Please record the votes.
Twenty yes, one no, motion passes.
All right. Okay, who's going to address this? Where is Mr. Demosi? Is he still here with us? Okay, I'll tell them.
Mr. Sandlin, could you just briefly again explain what is it you're wanting me to explain real quick?
Well, it's probably in a legal issue as well, but I mean, the application that comes in from a religious group, whether it be whatever church or whatever, how did you handle that? Not really handle that, but I mean, as far as an application, the way it's done, the way it's advertised, or whatever, and then we meet on it, is there a public hearing involved, blah, blah, blah? There's been a lot of misrepresentation, I think, on that, and if you would just, just the general regulations of how this was handled, is all.
Yes, sir, thank you. What I'll do is just give a brief overview of how site plans, when we're dealing with property that are uses by right, residential or any zone, are handled. When a piece of property is looking to be developed, and first of all, we look at the zoning of the property and determine whether or not the property is a use by right. If the property is a use by right, then it is not required to have any kind of a zoning hearing similar to what we're having tonight with the public hearings. It requires only the submission of a site plan. Basically, at that point, what we're looking at is whether or not the site plan that's submitted to us meets the requirements of the zoning resolution in regards to, say, building, block coverage, setbacks, landscaping, those kind of things. Those are the things that we're looking at. Those meetings are held at regularly scheduled Planning Commission meetings, and they are advertised as such. As we advertise all of our public meetings, at the beginning of each month, we put down the date, the time, and the location, which is what was required by Tennessee Code Annotated. So that's, I mean, just a real quick overview of our process for site plans.
Mr. Farley?
Doug, can you, and it may be that Jim may be the one who have to do this, but can you explain the land use regulations that Congress passed in 2000 concerning, and also, I think there's a 2009 state law that goes along with that, where, when it comes to religious entities?
The law that you are referring to, Mr. Farley, is generally among planners, is called RELOPA. It stands for the Religious Land Use and Institutionalized Persons Act. Basically, what that law does is basically says that, and the state law that's associated with it, as you said, which was passed in 2009, are basically saying you cannot make any law that treats one religious affiliation organization differently than you treat any other one. So we have to look at any site plan that is submitted for religious uses, be it Christian or otherwise, they have to be looked at under the same lens, if you will. So whenever we look at a site plan for religious institutions, we're not looking at it based on what the religion is, we're looking at it based on how it meets the criteria located in the zoning resolution. And if Mr. Cope's got anything to add, other than that, I defer to him.
Okay, is there any other explanation we need before we continue the public hearing?
Real quick, just wanted to ask about adequate notice and public notice, Mr. Demosi. What means do you have as far as given adequate notice?
What, what now?
Yes, sir. Can you just explain that to the citizens, that's all?
Well, the state law really doesn't give any clear definition as to what adequate notice is. Now, what we do for regularly scheduled meetings is, again, is we notify the public in a newspaper, general circulation, a Murfreesboro Post, we put the time, the date, and the location of every regular Planning Commission meeting that we have. Now, when it comes to rezoning hearings and special meetings, there is a higher standard of requirement that is needed at that time. Like the meetings tonight, the hearings that we had tonight, we actually had listed in the, again, Murfreesboro Post, they have to be published a minimum of 15 days prior to the meeting, any kind of a zoning amendment, ordinance amendment, anything like that. Those zoning changes are, and any special meeting, that is, the Planning Commission has, has to have more as far as the legal notices required. But our legal notices that we do are consistent, we've done them the same for years, and most of the municipalities, I would say the ones that we're familiar with, advertise regular meetings the same way we do.
Yes, sir. I never knew that, the explanation he gave to me, because I've had several calls, as well as all these other commissioners, about zoned by right, I guess you call it. Can you explain that meaning?
The zoning resolution that we have, that was drafted back in 1984, and of course amended throughout time, lists certain uses as uses by right. Specifically, we're talking in this case about residential zones, and it basically says religious uses are uses by right in residential zones. So because of that, they are not required to have public hearings like we had tonight for the rezonings and the ordinance amendment, but they are required to be held at, and considered at public meetings, and advertised as such, which they were.
Yes, sir. Well, when you're, when you're looking at 52,000 square feet, looking at a state road, right?
The, well, Veals Road's not a state road.
99?
Commissioner Sparks, we don't want to start any deliberation process.
Well, we're just trying to get some education, that's all. And I never knew, this is new to me, I've been on Smyrna Planning Committee, or was on for eight and a half years. I've seen the concerns with the church, and I've seen a church get denied because of requirements, parking, other encroachment. I've seen, and I felt sorry for the group that got turned down. This is new to me, as county commissioner for eight years, this is new to me. And I'm just trying to get some education, I think, as well as other commissioners, just want to get some education on it. It's a tough issue for all of us to talk about. You know, when I see a half a Walmart coming in on a tough, on a tough road out there that's got poor visibility, coming from Veals Road over, I've got concerns. We have the same concerns on these other site plans. We debate these issues all the time. So it surprises me that this is given by right. It just surprises me.
Commissioner Sparks, I'm ruling you out of order.
These are issues at planning that we can talk about.
You're not asking for questions to be answered. That's what we're doing right now. Clarification of the process was the request. I'm ruling you out of order.
Well, sir, this is going to happen again.
I'm ruling you out of order. Please be seated.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? No? You'll have your time, you've had your time to speak. Those of you that are going to speak, if you want to assemble in this little room here, 205, to expedite the process, that's perfectly fine. We'll be here as long as you want to be here. We don't, if you want to take time coming from your seat, that's still okay. Are you finished with that? Okay, we're ready for Mr. Pete Doughty.
What I'd like to discuss tonight is the fact that, as the people who elected you guys, the commissioners and the Planning Commission, I think we're very disappointed in the fact that you did not give us ample notice. And I don't care, the guy was correct that was up here, that he, y'all followed the rules for the legal notice, but I haven't come across anything that has said that you cannot put the agenda on an item as important as this particular one. And I think the education of this type of thing for tonight should have been done for everybody a long time ago, before May 24th. I'd like to know, was there any interest from you people about the size of the project? And did you look or question what the capacity was going to be down the road when you were looking at what the traffic problems might, you know, might occur in that area? Or were you looking at the 200 families that this mosque happens to serve at this point? You should have looked down the road, and if these roads had to be altered at this point, then they should have been the ones that had to foot the bill, not the taxpayers of this county. Plus, I'd like to know, if this group of Muslims, this particular group, claims that they do not, excuse me a second, as they do not, in no way are they political, did anybody question or think back on January the 9th, when they met out here on protesting, and I took this off of their website... and I took this off of their website a couple of weeks ago, and it has since been removed? It was under activities. A project, I mean, I'm sorry, a protest for Gaza was held in downtown Murfreesboro with around 200 people participating. Several non-Muslim friends joined us in this protest for this ongoing war against Gaza. I think everybody realizes that we are in a war with somebody, we can't identify all these people at this point, but we are in a war. And I think things of this nature, when we know, say, a little bit about a religion or a group, or whatever they want to identify themselves as, wants to come into a community and build a 52,000-square-foot facility when they only have 200 families, which 2.3, is that me?
Time is up, Mr. Doughty.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Jackie Archer, please.
Mr. Mayor, commissioners, and fellow patriots, I don't think this is an adversarial relationship we have here, I think we all want the same thing. I think the problem is that we are novices at this struggle, whereas the people we oppose are veterans, and they see our big, open hearts and arms in our American, open society as a loophole, and they jump right in before we know what has happened. I think that our local officials were lacking two essential tools that might have avoided this situation that we have here, one of which was the provisions of ordinances, laws, whatever, that would have given them, given review to this process, given the citizens an opportunity to come out and voice their opinions, and given the commissioners an opportunity to approve or disapprove with the best interests of the community at heart. Now, I don't know if the federal law, the Arlula laws prohibit that, I don't think that they do. I think that our laws can be changed here with the commissioners, and I think perhaps they are working on that. So I hope that's the case. The notification is really important, and the commissioner, Mr. P. of the, of the district that's involved in this proposed Islamic center, was not even notified. It would have been a courtesy. Yes, a courtesy, because it was not required, but I think that it should have been a courtesy that someone should have extended to Mr. P. He and others, I'm sure, on the commission and the mayor, all want us all to go away with the outcome that is best for this community and best for all of us. The second, the second missing tool is a lack of understanding of the difference between Islam and Western religion, between religion and ideology that is socio-economic, socio-educational, legislative, judiciary, and military. Now, most of you are here because you understand the difference, but there's a lot of folks out there who don't. And what I'm hoping is that we can get this thing somehow delayed, reviewed, and we'll have a chance to educate the rest of the folks. And the next time there's something like this comes up, it will be all of Murfreesboro and Rutherford County, here at the county courthouse. Thank you, Mayor and commissioners, and fellow patriots.
Thank you, Ms. Archer. Mr. James Estes.
No, sir. You've suspended that rule. Go right ahead, sir.
First of all, it's not my intention to disrespect anybody here tonight. When I called down to the mayor's office to put my name on the list to speak tonight, the lady who answered the phone said, "You can speak, but it's not going to make any difference, this thing is going to go through." I hope that's not the true reflection of the mayor's regard for the concerns of the citizens of Rutherford County, especially during this election time. I want to bring up several concerns, as I own one of the closest homes to the planned, largest Islamic center and mosque in Tennessee. First of all, I understand that they went before the Planning Commission this past Monday at 4:30 for a preliminary hearing regarding their proposed cemetery. I know for a fact that they had a burial on the property about two weeks ago. Is it legal to bury a body in the ground simply because you own the property? Is this how they regard the rulings of the Planning Commission and state laws? Secondly, did the Planning Commission do any planning at all before approving the 52,000-square-foot project, which is nestled right in the middle of a residential area? Did they consider the traffic issues or widening the roads, which will have to be done in order to accommodate a facility this large? Did they even conduct any kind of traffic studies regarding this already congested and dangerous strip of road? Will the taxpayers have to foot the bill for such improvements? Did they consider the current sewer situation? Ronald Todd, whose family used to own and raise hogs on the land before he sold it at public auction to another party prior to being purchased by the Islamic Center, told me last night, he was told two years ago, the entire sewage system would have to be enlarged across Murphy Spring to accommodate any more significant building on that side of the road by water and sewer department. If this is true, what will the expense be, who will foot the bill, and where will there be any environmental impact on Murphy Spring? Did the Planning Commission consider the possibility of noise pollution from the construction of a minaret, which is what they use for their call to prayer five times a day? Did they consider the dramatic hit on the property values of homes in the area? Whether it's due to local prejudice, noise, traffic, whatever, one can't deny the value of my property will take a huge hit as a result of this, as evidenced by the number of people at this meeting. What about my rights as a homeowner? Also, as a Christian and a believer of separation of church and state, I don't want my tax dollars supporting expansion of any religion. If religious facilities are exempt from taxes, they should also be exempt from receiving government funds to improve their facilities. Did the Planning Commission do any planning at all, or were they so afraid of a possible lawsuit in this hypersensitive, politically correct climate, that they couldn't simply do their job and make an informed decision? I heard from one commissioner that it's not a rezoning issue, so there was nothing to stop the approval. What exactly does the Planning Commission do? Do they just determine whether the intended use of the site matches what it's zoned for, and then give it a big thumbs up? I'd like to encourage everyone here who opposes this project to study any other precedents regarding laws and codes in this matter. Furthermore, if our voices don't make a difference here, as the lady at Mayor Burgess's office has said, I would encourage everyone to make their voices matter at the polls for every elected official who is instrumental in passing this project alone. If construction does begin, I would also encourage contractors to boycott it, and I would encourage the boycott of any contractor associated with the project. Thank you.
I thought this was a group of law-abiding, respectful citizens. We've asked you, we can continue this meeting, or we cannot continue this meeting. We're being very, very patient, we're going to let you say anything you want to say, as long as you want to say it, but let's be respectful and courteous. I would expect this group to be one of the most courteous groups imaginable. I just don't understand it. Mr. Donald Todd.
My name is Donald Todd, and I live at 633 Buck Lane. A question regarding the Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission's decision-making process. Regarding the recent decision by the Rutherford County Planning Commission to allow the building of a mega mosque in Rutherford County, why were the meetings held and decisions made without the input of the public? The times and the places were published, but not the agenda, so that the voters were not made aware of the important subject of the meetings, and not allowed therefore to give their input or opinions on what happens in their community? In their zeal to be politically correct, the commission circumvented the due process of fully informing the public. My concern, I realize that our Constitution affords all citizens the right to worship in their own way, it does as of now, anyway. Regarding the building of this mosque, we must all come to some realizations. Number one, the Islamic people need to realize that there is a faction of their religion that has become radical and dangerous. This is no secret, the events of the past 15 years have so bared this out. It may be a small faction, but it does exist. Knowing that the mosque is a center for the Islamic community and a place where ideas and matters of faith and life are centered, I and the rest of the community need to be assured that none of the unpleasant aspects of that faction rear their ugly head in our community. The Islamic people should understand my concern. In January of '09, a demonstration took place on the square protesting Israel's retaliation for rocket attacks upon their citizens by Hamas. Hamas is a known terrorist group, their protesters were supporting it. What can we deduce from that? This is my concern, will radical ideas and violence be brought to our doorstep? It is a reasonable concern and should be considered by the commission. Research must be done into the background of the applicants, as it should be for all who seek building permits. We would not want white supremists or Nazis here either. The size of this mosque tells me that this will probably be more than just a place for local Islamics to worship. Will it become a magnet for all streams of Islam, even those who are not devoted to peace and harmony? We know that the leadership has very great sway on the ideas of the many. I wish I didn't have to have these concerns, but reality is reality, and the kind and loving members of Islam are the victims of the violent ideology of some of their members. We should study what has happened in France, a country that has embraced Islam and has been very lenient to them. France has been racked with violent, anti-government protests and demonstrations by Islamic groups who are not bound by French law, but by Sharia law. We don't want it to happen here. I am sorry for the offense it causes some people, but it is better to be safe than sorry. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Todd. Ms. Lori Cordoza Moore.
Mr. Mayor and the commissioners, thank you so much for this opportunity. I want, I want to thank each of you for providing the opportunity for the community to voice our concerns with regards to the proposed construction of a mosque located on Bradyville Pike. You, as the county commissioner, have a duty to protect the public safety of citizens under your charge in this county, and the citizens have a civil right to such protection. This is the primary and fundamental job of government. Any action by you as a governmental official under color of law that violates the civil rights to protection of citizens of this county would likely give rise to a lawsuit under 28 U.S.C. Section 1983 against the county, and more significantly, you and your individual capacity as county commissioner, likely without any county or state immunity. You are now officially on notice that we believe that at the very least you have a duty to investigate and determine whether it is foreseeable that the proposed building of this facility would serve as a threat to the public safety of the citizens of this county. There, there have been many issues raised regarding this facility. One is the association of the cleric. The other is who is going to fund such a large facility? And thirdly, will this facility further the political agenda of radical Islam? Unless you have already investigated the identities and records of the applicants, the members of the corporate board, the officers of the corporation, the employees, the attorneys assisting the corporation, the advisors and donors to the mosque, then you have a duty to investigate the identity and records of such to ensure that this certain mosque does not pose a threat to the public safety of the citizens of the county. Any failure to engage in such action could result in a lawsuit against both the county and you as county commissioners, individually without immunity, and with attorney's fees payable by you to the prevailing plaintiffs in such suit under federal law 28 U.S.C. Section 1988. I respectfully request that you stay the enforcement of the previous vote to allow the building of the mosque until such as time as the county commissioners investigate this matter. It is not the job of the citizens to investigate the above information, but rather the duty of the county commissioners. If the investigation reveals that there is not a threat to public safety, then the stay would be lifted and the mosque would be allowed to proceed with construction. However, if the investigation reveals that there is a threat to the public safety, then the faculty, the facility may not be built and the previous vote must be reversed. Failure to investigate this matter is not only a violation of the duty of the county commissioners, but also will result in a potential legal liability for the commission. Thank you very much for your thoughtful consideration of this request.
Thank you, Mrs. Cordoza Moore. And Mr. George Erdel.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, ladies and gentlemen of the county government. Thank you, Mr. Jordan, for getting the rules modified so we can each say what we come to say. Folks, looks like y'all have been duped. You had somebody come before you calling themselves a church, a mosque, a religion. Well, I got a feeling that none of you out there have got the intelligence on Islam that the hundreds of people in this auditorium tonight already possess. Islam is a system of government, Islam is a system of justice. The purpose and the desire of Islam is to enforce Sharia law onto every non-Islamic country. They've got 1,400 years' history to demonstrate it clearly. We have people here that have been accused in public of being intolerant, of being bigots. Well, I maintain to you, ladies and gentlemen, we've got people here who remember September 11th. We've got people here that remember 1993, when President Clinton was in office. It wasn't Baptists and Catholics that put bombs in the bottom of the World Trade Center. It wasn't a Catholic or a Baptist that shot up Fort Hood in Texas, ladies and gentlemen. It was an Islamist. And if we allow this to go without being countered, you gentlemen have been asked to stay the approval or rescind it. I respectfully request that you somehow do that. It has all appearances that the rules were broken in order to get that approval, I ask that you might bend the rules just a little bit so that we can get the mess straightened out. Okay, these people here are not, not bigoted, they're not afraid, they're scared, because these people watch, these people go to the trouble to learn exactly what we're dealing with. The Islamist is not a religion like Baptist, Church of Christ, Methodist, it's a political way of life, and if you folks allow this to stand, I'm afraid we're going to end up with another training camp here in Rutherford County like we've got up in Dover. They've already got a facility up there in Dover where people hear gunfire up there, people hear all kinds of things going on up there. Has it been investigated? No. Why? Why, that's a religion. Ladies and gentlemen, don't be duped. I ask you that you seriously do some study. I've got books to recommend, I've got people who were former Islamists- I've got people who were former Islamists, people who are now born-again Christians can tell you what they were raised up in, in the Middle East countries. My name's George Erdel. I'm the key party Democrat candidate for the sixth congressional district, Tennessee. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Erdel. Mr. Jesse Garcia. Mr. Garcia. Mr. Jesse Garcia. Don't see him coming forward, but if he comes forward, he can speak later. Next, we have Mr. Alan Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. As you said, my name's Alan Jackson. I have been a part of this community for more than forty years. I am a survivor of church construction in the county and in the city and have benefited from the fair treatment of the planning commission here and have also suffered some anxiety at the stringency with which they enforce their rules. So I know both sides of that. I am equally an advocate for tolerance and I'm thankful for the diversity of our community. My request tonight is really very simple, and that's that you grant an expanded public hearing to the discussion of this Islamic center. I understand it's an extraordinary request, but I would submit to you, these are extraordinary times. There are two reasons I suggest the public hearing has merit. One, any group who states a desire to initiate change in our community as they move towards it, as this group has, should be thoroughly understood before they are granted permission. The second reason is that simply out of respect for our brave young men and women in Afghanistan and Iraq. They are combating radical Islam, and I will underscore radical Islam, but they are putting their lives on the line to do so, and I would submit to you, we have a duty here at home to understand thoroughly the nature, the intent, the funding of any group that is being invited into our community under that general banner. I believe that's our civic responsibility. I appreciate you taking up this difficult issue and granting us the extended time tonight. I know you are very busy, but I am grateful for our community and I'm grateful for the leadership that we have had in this community for many years. And I believe you represent a quality of leadership that will extend that to the generations who follow us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Let's see. I may not spell, say this name correctly. Ms. Sosun Habib. Sosun Habib. Did I use that name properly? H-A-B-I-B. That person doesn't appear to be with us, but, okay, Ms. Karen Harold. Karen Harold. Here she comes.
Thank you very much. I'm just a citizen. I hate to fall for a big preacher. But anyway, um, it's the luck of the draw. But anyway, um, I feel for you gentlemen. I feel for our country. We, I was scared coming here tonight to even speak, which makes me so sad, I can't even talk about it, that we are afraid in our own country of the people that we've embraced here. And I'm not against any kind of religion, Hindus, we don't, they're not trying to kill us, but everybody knows who's trying to kill us, and it's like we can't say it. And that is a scary thing. We have got to wake up and say what's going on in this country before it's too late. And I don't, I'm sorry, I'm emotional about this because I'm emotional about my country. And I, I love this country and I love the people in it. And I agree with the lady that spoke and said, we've opened up our hearts to these people and they've taken it and stabbed us in the back with it. And I don't know what else to say except for, we have got to wake up. And I feel for the men that have to govern in these days. I don't hold you at fault, I don't think bad things about you. I know that you're just probably as scared as we are because you're the ones whose name is on the line. My name's on the line, they're not going to come after me. Well, maybe they are, I don't know. But I'm saying, your names are on the line. So I just, I support you, I pray for you, I'm just lifting you up, and I just want to let you know that we, we're in this together and, and as you can see, all these people here, that people are really concerned about this. And, and if we just keep turning a deaf eye, turning a deaf ear and not going after what we know to be right, then we are guilty of like, I, I was, I asked my husband, he's a big World War II, I said, how did Hitler ever come to power? How did that ever happen? And it's because people just turn a deaf eye. They're afraid. And, and like I said, I was afraid coming here tonight because I don't know, but I'm just saying, we've got to stand up. Somebody has got to stand up and be, take, say, take charge and say, we've got to take this country back. I say all the time, I don't know what to do. But this is where we got to start, and we've got to, we've got to listen to each other and we've got to appeal to our people and not be against them or booing them, but we've got to say, we support you. And that's all I got to say.
Thank you, Ms. Harold. Mr., I don't know, Samir Almoti. Did I pronounce that name correctly? Almoti, A-L-M-O-T-E-I-E. I don't see that person coming forward. So we'll next go to Ms. Yvonne Smith. Ms. Smith. Ms. Yvonne Smith. Okay, I don't see Ms. Smith.
Councilpeople. So this is the Rutherford County. My goal here this evening, we represent what's called Acts of America. We teach people how, and give you an understanding of what Islam is all about. Everybody makes a decision on what Islam is all about. We study the book, we read the book, we know what it teaches. So to wipe away all doubts and make it perfectly clear what they think and what they're doing. The goal of Islam is to rule the world. That's their goal. In world history, history always teaches us, if someone in the past repeats something, that usually is what they're going to do in the future. Two times Islam in the world has attacked the world all over at one time. They're now on the third jihad. You hear these events happening all over the world and these, and because, and, and since, since nine eleven, there's been fifteen thousand four hundred and seventy-one deadly terrorist attacks around the world since nine eleven. There's been over thirty thousand attempts to do this. So it shows you half the time they've been failing at their terrorist attacks. Okay? When they crashed the planes into the New York towers in nine eleven, Islam folk said, we were offended, that's why we did it. Now, if you really want to know the truth, why they flew the planes, because the news media won't tell you, newspapers aren't telling you, except one, the Register did. They, they tell the truth, and they're, they're labeled as the hate speechers. But according to the Quran, and I'm going to give you the, actually, the verse in the Quran and the verse, the, what we call a chapter and a verse, in Quran, Surah, they call it Surah. There's a hundred and fourteen books in the, in the Quran. Eight twelve, it says, "I will throw fear into the hearts of the disbelievers." That is, that is what the Quran tells us. Their goal in America, for America, is to have us, is an Islamic nation by 2050. That is their goal. They're having a meeting in Florida this summer, they're having a meeting in Chicago, and they're having another one up in Canada. Understand, know your enemy, and I always say this all the time, know your enemy because they're not a friend. First of all, Islamic world, in the Quran, the Sharia go together. You can't have one without the other. If you put both of them together, it, it clearly tells us that they have their, their complete life. It's an ideology, it's not a religion. When they come to you and they told you that they wanted to put a mosque here in Rutherford County, it is not a religion, it's an ideology. So they lied to you from the get-go on that. Okay? For example, Surah three, it says, "There is no other religion except Islam, and Allah is the only God." That's in their book. They also say that Allah owns the whole planet. It's theirs. That's the mindset. You need to know the mindset. The more that you can understand your enemy, the better you'll be able to defend yourself against them. I got a whole lot of stuff I got to say, I didn't even get going, but thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes. Mr. Foy Smith. Mr. Foy Smith. I don't see that person coming forward. Okay, we'll go to Mr. David Allen. Mr. David Allen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is David Allen. I was employed as an environmental engineer for an aerospace company in Oklahoma, Tennessee for twenty-eight years and retired about a year and a half ago. My wife had a business in Murfreesboro for twenty-two years. She's also retired. We have lived in Murfreesboro for twenty-four years. Oklahoma is poised to be the first state in the nation to ban state judges from relying on Islamic law known as Sharia when deciding cases. The amendment, which also would forbid judges from using international laws as a basis for decisions, will now be put before Oklahoma's voters in November. Approval is expected. In many countries, strict interpretations of Sharia laws are used to justify cruel punishment such as amputation, whipping, stoning, as well as unequal treatment of women in custody, inheritance, dress, and independence, according to the United, the American Council on Foreign Affairs. Sharia courts of law have been petitioned and established in Western countries such as the UK, Toronto, and Canada, and even here in the United States. In such cases, judges might look to laws or rulings in other jurisdictions for guidance. The proposed amendment in Oklahoma would block judges in Oklahoma courts from drawing on Sharia or the laws of other nations in such decisions. The judges must abide by the laws of the United States of America. It does not matter what France might do, what Great Britain might do, or what the Kingdom of Saudi Arabia might do. Court decisions must be based on the federal laws of the United States of America or the laws of the state of Tennessee. Until such a time as when local members of the Islamic beliefs agree in writing to abide by the laws of the United States of America and live in accordance with that agreement and not the laws of Sharia or state laws as the one in Oklahoma is promulgated in Tennessee, the expansion of Islamic schools and mosques cannot be legally approved by any administration. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Allen.
Mayor, county commissioners, and fellow residents of Murfreesboro. I think I get the award for best dressed today, don't I? Okay. I have three rules when I speak in front of people. I'll, I'll be sincere, I'll be brief, and I'll be seated. So give me about two minutes. I've been a resident of Rutherford County and Murfreesboro for about fifteen years. I'm a father of five children. And as a father, I think we all know that there are exceptions to rules sometimes when you're disciplining your children, and, and I actually would like to second the motion of Pastor Alan Jackson of, of having a, an expanded public hearing on this. I have a few questions that I would like to have answered at this hearing, and that is, fifty-two thousand square feet in Murfreesboro? Knowing Muhammad, the teachings of the Quran that we've been, a couple people have alluded to, the political agenda of Islam, plus the agenda of the mosque that was taken off of their website recently? Why was it taken off? Right? As citizens, we have a right to be concerned within the intent of this mosque, we have a, to be, a right to be concerned with the threat of this mosque and the process that was arguably followed by our planning commission. And so I, I would respectfully ask for an expanded public hearing again. I need to know more when we make a decision that's going to impact the community forever, sir. Who is behind the mosque? Why is it here? Right? And why is it so big? And so I guess it all comes down to one thing, and I know we have the religious laws that govern if a church is supposed to be here or not, but is Islam a religion? Or is it a political system? Is it a system of government? And is a mosque a church? I'll, I'll, I'll leave you with two quotes, and that is, the Prime Minister of Turkey, when asked what a mosque was about two months ago, he said, "A mosque is a fortress, a fortress to equip and to train." And the last quote I'll leave you with, because I promised to be brief, is from Edmund, Edmund Burke, and you probably have all heard this quote, and that is, "All that is necessary for the triumph of evil is that good men do nothing." Thank you for your pen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cozimore. Next, we have Mr. Roy Grady. Mr. Grady. Mr. Roy Grady is, he, here he comes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, ladies and gentlemen. Good evening. I want to visualize, I want you to visualize what it must have been like on December seventh, nineteen forty-one, when this country was relentlessly attacked. That day, America changed forever. Again, in September eleventh, two thousand and one. I grant you, there is more than one in this room that has served for the freedom of this country. There's a lot of Christian believers in this room, and this community are largely influenced by the media, which in their political correctness, miss the truth behind the Islamic movement and will not tell us what really goes on on the other parts of the world. Islamic leaders use religion as the glue to unite the local Muslims to gradually change the way of life and move away from the beliefs of Judeo-Christians. We need to understand the history, mindset, and motivation and potential threat to our Christian world this proposal truly is. Over the last hundred years, there's been escalation of major world powers moving us closer to a one-world government. And our president recently spoke at a Muslim audience in Cairo, Egypt, and apologized for our country. And we recently heard a person from Cairo, Egypt, speak here in Murfreesboro, testifying how blessed is this country with the hand of the living God on us. And I recently had the opportunity to see how the other side thinks and watch current Islamic TV clips that spewed only hate, and I cannot imagine the agenda would be any different from within this purpose, within the proposed Islamic center here. Some of the things that they had on their website was to expand beyond religious teachings, ensure Islamic social institutions to include all ages, children of all ages, work hard so that the Islamic Center of Murfreesboro has a prominent role in the development and progression of Middle Tennessee, to establish Arabic as a second language in our schools. America is a target for the jihadist Muslims to invade, kill, and come to power and to take America by force, to enslave us as infidels. Our country is under siege, ladies and gentlemen, because it was founded on the belief that Jesus Christ is our Lord and King, the virgin-born Son of God and risen Savior, the living God. And I urge you, the leaders of this community, the commissioners and the mayor, to expand and open discussions of this matter, and I covet your prayers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grady. Next, Mr. Don Day. Next, Mr. Don Day.
Pronounce that name just perfect, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Thanks for giving us a chance to talk. This is a good thing for our community. We appreciate the opportunity, an expanded opportunity. We appreciate that greatly. I'm a local real estate developer. I'm retired from the Air Force, 20 years, one month, 14 days. And I haven't seen this much opposition since my last development I put before this very board. And you guys have the reputation of being firm but fair. And I've been a recipient of both ends of that, the firm part. You used a lot of due diligence, and you listened to the people. When I would bring a development here, and they'd say about traffic, and about drainage, and about water, and about property values, and all the things that I thought we used a lot of time and effort and money on to get answers to. And you guys would come back to us and say, "Well, could you add this? And would you do this? And we'll give you conditions if you'll do the following things." And I would go back to the table and put a dollar value to it and say, "Yeah, I think we can do a lot of this stuff." And then we would get it approved. I think that's all they're asking for here. Use every vehicle in your arsenal that you can to try to make sure who we're approving, what we're approving, and what it's going to be used for. And we're not about tolerance. It's not about being intolerant. We're the most tolerant country. Go to Saudi Arabia and open up a Christian church. Probably not going to happen. So I would just say that look into what we're asking about and do anything you can to try to maybe postpone this, or at least give us some time where we can do the due diligence to find out what it is that they are trying to pursue. If it's what they say they are, then all they're asking is a little bit of time. I've waited years for subdivisions to come online, because that's the process. And I think they need to abide by it. If they want to have what they want in our community, they need to abide by the same process that everyone else goes through. And whether it's a religion, or whether it's a church, or whether it's a subdivision, you guys do the right thing most all the time. And I think that that's all we're asking for. Just do the right thing. Give the people their voice and listen to them, and then just see if there's something that we can look into. I think that overall, I think the way this thing's being handled is being handled the right way. And we appreciate the opportunity to come and speak before you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Day. Next, Ms. Ann McCormack.
Hello, my name is Ann McCormack. I live on Millwood Drive at the Millwood subdivision. Again, I want to thank the mayor and the commission for extending the time so that they would hear everyone who had signed up. I would also like to thank the Islamic Center. I have to admit that they have been the ones most proactive in signage and letting us know what may or may not happen there. Sadly, it has not been our commissioner. That sign has been up there for some time. Did I have any idea that it was a 52,000-square-foot compound? Absolutely not. My son used to attend karate, and their current Islamic center is just down the street from it. It was always orderly, never had a problem. And I understand their need for growth. But to start building a compound and have it sort of push-through about what appears to be a back door, we're going to relax regulations. I know that in building a house, my insurance company wants to know how far the nearest fire hydrant is to my house. Putting a 52,000-square-foot compound on a small road like Veal's Road, it's an unreasonable thing to ask. I think that if we had taken this step by step, we would have had a much better chance for the community to welcome an additional asset. But a compound is very different from a church. And what we're asking for is to not make our property values go down, that we have other churches in the area of all denominations and do so in our own subdivision. And I would ask that people, it would appear to me that the horse has been let out of the barn in this particular case. And I don't see how we're going to be able to dial it back without, once again, incurring legal expenses similar to what was incurred doing the Bible Park, that we go ahead and we start something, then we want to dial it back, and next thing we know, we're in court and we're expending additional funds. So I would urge people to remember what the commission attempted to do. I wish the Islamic Center well. I think that if they continue to work within the community and to scale down their aversion, that they'll find a much more welcoming neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McCormack. Next, Mr. Hunter McFarland. Mr. Hunter McFarland. I don't see Mr. McFarland present. That is the last person we have on the requested list to speak public comments. That concludes our public comment period. Thank you very much. Next, we go into our agenda for elections and confirmations. We'll take just a moment or two, Mr. Coggan, to let our visitors exit, and then we will... Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to continue with our meeting, so if you'll help us with the exit, we would appreciate it. So, Mr. Coggan, you may begin, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, if you'll notice, under elections and confirmations, our first item of business under there is to elect notaries. You've received a list of those. Mr. Chairman, I move for their approval.
Second by Commissioner Sandin. All in favor of approving these lists of notaries, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous.
Second, tonight, we need to fill two vacancies on the Limeball Library Board. We received, the steering committee received four applications for those two appointments, those two vacancies. And it was reappointments of, the steering committee would like to recommend reappointments of Melissa Beatty and Marilyn Castelli. Mr. Chairman, I move for their approvals.
Second, Commissioner McAdoo. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous.
Thirdly, we need to announce two vacancies on the Community Care Board, and finally, announce six vacancies on the Board of Health. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Coggan. There is no unfinished business. Then we'll go down to the reports by standing committees. You have a report from the Purchasing Committee. Do we have a motion concerning that report from the Purchasing Committee? Commissioner Gooch, second by Commissioner Sandin. Is there any discussion? All of you in favor of that, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. Okay, next, we will start the lengthy journey with our chairperson of the Budget, Finance, and Investment Committee, Mrs. Ely.
Item L2A, a resolution authorizing the issuance by the Industrial Development Board of up to $22,718,000 of recovery zone facility revenue bonds. Whereas at the regular meeting on February 11, 2010, the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners adopted a resolution designating Rutherford County as a recovery zone. And whereas at the regular meeting on March 11, 2010, the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners adopted a resolution approving the issuance by the Industrial Development Board of Rutherford County, Tennessee of up to $12,718,000 of recovery zone facility revenue bonds for the purpose of assisting MIDTMD LLC in financing a portion of the cost of the construction and equipping of a medical office building to be located on the Middle Tennessee Medical Center campus adjacent to the hospital located at 1700 Medical Center Parkway, Murfreesboro, Tennessee. And whereas the Commissioner of the State of Tennessee Department of Economic and Community Development, on April 1, 2010, allocated an additional $10 million of recovery zone facility bond volume to the issuer for use by the applicant. And whereas at a meeting on May 25, 2010, a resolution was adopted by the Industrial Development Board of Rutherford County, Tennessee, a copy of the same being attached here too as Exhibit 1 and incorporated herein by reference as if set forth herein at length verbatim, authorizing the issuance of up to $22,718,000 of recovery zone facility revenue bonds under the aura to MIDTMD LLC for the purpose of financing a portion of the cost of the construction and equipping of a medical office building to be located on the Middle Tennessee Medical Center campus adjacent to the hospital located at 1700 Medical Center Parkway, Murfreesboro, Tennessee. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor and other appropriate officials of Rutherford County, Tennessee, be and are hereby authorized to execute all necessary documents relative to the issuance of recovery zone facility revenue bonds by the Industrial Development Board of Rutherford County, Tennessee, to MIDTMD LLC as the ultimate beneficiary of Rutherford County's allocation of $22,718,000. Resolved this 17th day of June, 2010, Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Have a motion second. Commissioner Sandin, does anyone have any questions or discussion? Commissioner Williams.
This is money that's paid back. It's not a taxpayer cost. Is that correct? Right?
Correct.
Yeah, no taxpayer. No taxpayer dollars.
All right. If there's no other discussion, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty-one, yes. Motion passes.
Item L2B, a resolution awarding employee life insurance carrier to the standard. Whereas requests for proposals were issued for the employee life insurance with 13 bids being received and opened by the Purchasing Committee. And whereas the employee security planning tabulated all bids, and the bids were reviewed by a subcommittee of the Insurance Committee with two finalists being selected. And whereas the two finalists made presentations to the Insurance Committee with the standard being the recommended carrier effective January 1, 2011. And whereas currently, the carrier for the employee's life insurance is the Hartford, providing $30,000 of coverage at an annual premium cost of $57.60 per employee and a total annual premium of $287,078. And whereas the standard has offered $35,000 of coverage at an annual cost of $48.30 per employee for a total annual premium of $240,772... Excuse me. $727, resulting in an annual savings of $46,351. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor be authorized to execute all necessary documents on behalf of Rutherford County, Tennessee to award the life insurance carrier to the standard effective January 1, 2011. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second, Commissioner Schaefer. Any discussion? Commissioner P.
Just some clarification on that. Annual cost, is that annual cost 48, 30? Or is that a monthly?
That's monthly.
Okay, it says annually here, so we need to correct that, I guess.
No, no.
No, no, excuse me.
No, that's per employee. Then look at the next, for an annual premium of, the next line.
Is that, that is correct. That is annual, Ms.?
Per person, per year.
Oh, okay. I just wanted to make sure we were straight on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. P. All right, any other discussion? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change their vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty, yes. Motion passes.
Item L2C, general fund budget amendments. And commissioners, you will notice that we will be doing revenue adjustments for all the funds also. And beginning with revenue adjustments for the Stones River, Greenway, Chamber of Commerce, and Trustees Commission. And if you will notice that our revenue adjustment, I'll need you to turn to the pages that are attached, the last page. After making adjustments to reserves, you will notice there is a net decrease to the general fund of $2,870,886. From the Insurance Department, we have increased revenue of transfers in. This is paying our prior directors' accumulated leave, and this increased expenditure is in the amount of $2,050. And you see the related benefits that are associated with that. From the Planning Department, we are moving the development tax to the general fund for increased revenue of development tax, $30,000, increased expenditures for consultant, $30,000. From the Health Department, from undesignated fund balance, $10,000 for utilities. And from the Sheriff's Department and jail, increased revenue of contributions of $24,000 for in-service training, $24,000. And from the jail and maintenance agreements, $4,500. To the Sheriff's Department for data processing supplies, $4,500. Emergency management from undesignated fund balance, $5,455. To overtime pay and the related benefits, this would be appropriating... This would be appropriating funds for overtime pay as a result of the floods. And we will have a couple of things tonight that will deal with some additional costs as a result of the funds. And I would remind you that we do, we are eligible for reimbursement, and that would be 75% from FEMA and 12 and a half percent from the state. Pet adoption and welfare services, increased revenue, contributions and gifts, $2,500. Increased expenditures for veterinary services, $2,500. Employee benefits, employee insurance from the various departments. This is to provide funding based on the actual participation in the plan, $10,367. And that's Circuit Court, Juvenile Court, and Stormwater. Geographic information, reappraisal, and the Sheriff's Department. Unemployment compensation from undesignated fund balance, $3,000. And resolve this 17th day of June, 2010. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Motion second from Commissioner P. Any questions about this? Okay, please cast your votes.
Anyone who has not voted that would like to vote, or anyone that would like to change your vote, please do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty, yes. Motion passes.
Item L2D, a resolution authorizing a 2010 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Grant application and a memorandum of understanding with the City of Murfreesboro. Whereas the City of Murfreesboro and Rutherford County have been informed by the Department of Justice of their eligibility to receive a joint award of $93,049 from a federal grant program called the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant, with each agency Whereas to receive the award, the program requires that the application be filed jointly between county and city, and a memorandum of understanding be executed between the two entities agreeing upon the amount of funds each is to receive, and which agency will file the application on behalf of both entities. Whereas it is being proposed that the City of Murfreesboro be designated as the fiscal agent to file the application on behalf of both entities, request the drawdown of funds, and pass the agreed-upon portion of the funds on to Rutherford County. Now therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor and all other appropriate officials be authorized to enter into the memorandum of understanding with the City of Murfreesboro, a copy of the same being attached here too as Exhibit 1 and incorporated herein by reference as if set forth herein at length verbatim, designating the City of Murfreesboro as the fiscal agent to apply for the 2010 Byrne Justice Assistant Grant on behalf of Rutherford County, with each agency to share the funds equally. $46,524.50 to the City of Murfreesboro, $46,524.50 to Rutherford County. Additionally, that the county mayor also be authorized to accept the grant subject to it being awarded. Resolved this 17th day of June, 2010. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second by Commissioner Hall. All right, any discussion? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty, yes. Motion passes. Failed to realize that Commissioner Williams returned, so if we could note that he was present. Actually, could I just recast that vote, Mr. Robertson? This is an error on my part.
An error on the recorder's part, so let's give them an opportunity to put their switch where they wish to. Now record the votes. Would that be appropriate, Mr. Robertson?
This seems appropriate. Twenty one, yes.
All right, thank you.
Item L2E, a resolution authorizing three-year COPS hiring grant application. Whereas the Sheriff's Department has been notified by the United States Department of Justice of their eligibility to apply for the 2010 COPS hiring grant. And whereas the Sheriff's Department desires to apply for a three-year grant to hire 10 officers at a cost of $1,458,893.01 over the three-year period, which will be 100% federally funded. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor and all other appropriate officials of Rutherford County, Tennessee, be and are hereby authorized to submit an application for the three-year 2010 COPS hiring grant in the amount of $1,458,893.01 for the purpose of hiring 10 officers. Resolved this 17th day of June, 2010. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second, Commissioner Dernigan. Have any questions? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty, yes. Motion passes.
Ambulance Service Fund Budget Amendments. These are revenue adjustment and trustees commission. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the ambulance service fund be amended as follows. Notice you have increased revenue, also decrease in revenue with an expense, increased expenditure for the trustees commission, which results in an increase to their undesignated fund balance of $382,270. Resolved this 17th day of June, 2010. I move for approval.
Second, Commissioner Cook. Any discussion? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Nineteen, yes. Motion passes.
Item L2G, a resolution accepting Christie Houston Grant Award for the purchase of four ambulances and the related budget amendment. Whereas at the regular meeting on May 13, 2010, the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners adopted a resolution authorizing the county mayor to submit an application to the Christie Houston Foundation in the amount of $300,000 for the purchase of four 2007 ambulances. And whereas the Christie Houston Foundation has awarded said grant in the said amount. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor be authorized to accept the grant from the Christie Houston Foundation in the amount of $300,000, and that the ambulance service fund be amended as follows for the purpose of purchasing four 2007 ambulances. Increased revenue, contributions of $300,000, increased expenditures for motor vehicles, $300,000. Resolved this 17th day of June, 2010. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second by Commissioner Black. Any discussion? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Nineteen, yes. Motion passes.
Solid Waste Sanitation Fund Budget Amendment, again, revenue adjustments and then a budget amendment from the convenience center. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the Solid Waste Sanitation Fund be amended as follows. Revenue adjustments, notice you have increased revenues and decreased revenues for an increase to the Solid Waste Sanitation Fund Undesignated Fund Balance of $230,142. And for convenience centers, from undesignated fund balance, $25,000. To contract with private agencies, $20,000. And contract with government agencies, $5,000. Again, these, this expenditure due to the May 1st floods. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second, Commissioner Dernigan. Commissioner Daniels.
Just a familiar problem. I move we correct the typographical error that names Ms. Ely as Georgia Ely in her signature line.
Point well taken, Mr. Daniels. We will correct that to Joyce Ely. But it's Georgia Lynch.
We need to take Ely off there.
So noted, and we will...
Thank you, thank you.
All right, let's see, did I get a motion to say, yes, I think we did. All right, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
I don't need to do that, for sure.
Record the votes.
Twenty one, yes. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Item L2I, Highway Fund Budget Amendments. Again, we have revenue adjustments. Notice you have increased revenue in, with decreased revenue, which results in a decrease to the Highway Fund Undesignated Fund Balance of $475,416. Resolved this 17th day of June, 2010. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second, Commissioner Sandlin. Any discussion? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty, yes. Motion passes.
Item L2J, General Purpose School Fund Budget Amendments. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the General Purpose School Fund be amended according to the schedule. A copy of the same being attached here too as Exhibit 1, incorporated herein by reference as if set forth herein at length verbatim. And if you will follow with me, we do have career ladder extended contract. This amendment, excuse me, that would be page three of three. This amendment reduces career ladder revenue by $114,070 and reduces expenditures for career ladder and adjusts extended contract expenditures for a reduction in expenditures of $111,070. Coordinated School Health and Safe Schools, page two of two. $10,000 for a grant from Middle Tennessee Medical Center and the related coordinated school health expenditures, and to amend, $129,832 in safe school revenues from the state and those related expenditures. For the classified staff, page three of three, to amend, $140,894 in budgeted classified staff budget lines, and $25,375 in budgeted benefits to other classified staff expenditures and certified staff, page two of two, to amend, $224,200 in budgeted certified staff budget lines, and $22,400 in budgeted benefit to other certified staff expenditures and benefits. Medical insurance, page six of six, to amend, $704,665 in additional employee medical insurance cost, and to reduce staff expenditures by $600,278 and $104,387 in related benefits. And retirement and other benefits, page five of five, this covers $435,264 in additional employee retirement expenditures by reallocating $288,776 from the line item for electricity, $71,009 from vacant educational assistance, and $75,479 in various other employee benefit accounts. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second, Commissioner McAdoo. Any discussion on any of those items? Okay, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, and anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Nineteen, yes. Motion passes.
Item L2K, a resolution authorizing approval of the state's Energy Efficient Schools Loan Agreements. Whereas at the regular meeting on March 11, 2010, the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners adopted a resolution approving the execution and delivery of an energy agreement and lease purchase agreement and related instruments between the Rutherford County Board of Education and Excel Energy Group Incorporated to finance upgrades to the lighting system in its facilities for the purpose of improving the quality of lighting and reducing energy consumption. And whereas the Board of Education has received the Energy Efficient Schools Initiative Loan Agreements from the State of Tennessee, Energy Efficient Schools Council, and it will not be necessary to execute the lease purchase agreement with Excel Energy Group Incorporated. And whereas the Rutherford County Board of Education desires to enter into a loan agreement with the Energy Efficient Schools Council in the amount of $500,000 for a term of 0% for seven years. And whereas the Rutherford County Board of Education desires to enter into a second loan agreement with the Energy Efficient Schools Council in the amount of $1,096,035 for a term of 3% for five years. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that county mayor and all other appropriate officials of Rutherford County, Tennessee, be and are hereby authorized to execute all necessary documents with the State of Tennessee Energy Efficient Schools Council relative to the loan agreement in the amount of $500,000 for a term of 0% for seven years. A copy of the same being attached here too as Exhibit 1 and incorporated herein by reference as if set forth herein at length verbatim. And a loan amount in the amount of $1,096,035 for a term of 3% for five years. A copy of the same being attached here too as Exhibit 2 and incorporated herein by reference as if set forth herein at length verbatim for the purposes of financing upgrades to lighting system in facilities throughout the Rutherford County school system. Resolved this 17th day of June, 2010. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second, Commissioner Jordan. Any discussion? All right, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change their vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Motion passes.
Item L2L, Education Capital Projects Fund Budget Amendments. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the Education Capital Projects Fund be amended as follows. Again, revenue adjustments, we have increased revenue and decreased revenue with increased expenditures of the trustees commission resulting in an increase to the undesignated fund balance of this fund of $21,917. And from the educational capital projects, maintenance and repair of buildings, $1,000 to architects for $1,000. Resolved this 17th day of June, 2010. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second, Commissioner Johnson. Any discussion? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change their vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty one, yes. Motion passes.
Item L2M, a resolution authorizing Amendment 1 to agreement with Tennessee Department of Mental Health and Developmental Disabilities. Whereas at the regular meeting on December 17, 2009, the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners adopted a resolution authorizing the county mayor to execute a contract with the Tennessee Department of Mental Health and Developmental Disabilities to establish agreed rates and ensure payment for the evaluations and treatment necessary to evaluations ordered pursuant to TCA Title 33, Chapter 7, Part 3 for defendants charged only with misdemeanor crimes for the period beginning July 1, 2009 through June 30, 2010. Whereas it is being proposed to extend the term of the contract with the Tennessee Department of Mental Health and Developmental Disabilities to June 30, 2011. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor be authorized to execute Amendment 1 to the contract with the State of Tennessee Department of Mental Health and Developmental Disabilities for the payment of mental health evaluation and treatment services for criminal defendants charged with misdemeanors only. A copy of the same being attached here too as Exhibit 1 and incorporated herein by reference as if set forth herein at length verbatim to extend the length of the contract to June 30, 2011. Resolved this 17th day of June, 2010. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second from Commissioner Cook. Any discussion? Any discussion? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change their vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty, yes, one abstained, motion passes.
Item L-2N, A Resolution Authorizing License Agreement with Tennessee Department of Environment and Conservation for the purpose of providing office space for groundwater protection staff. Whereas the State of Tennessee Department of Environment and Conservation desires to enter into an agreement with Rutherford County for the purpose of securing approximately 1,560 square feet of office and related space located at Number One South Public Square, Room 215, Murfreesboro, Tennessee for the groundwater protection staff. And whereas the term of the agreement shall begin on July 1, 2010, and shall end on June 30, 2011. And whereas the state shall make payment in arrears on the last day of the payment period as follows: annual fee of $9,300, payment in installments of $775 per month. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor be and is hereby authorized to execute a license agreement, a copy of the same being attached as Exhibit One, and incorporated herein by reference as if set forth herein at length verbatim, on behalf of Rutherford County, Tennessee with the State of Tennessee Department of Environment and Conservation for office space for the groundwater protection staff for an annual fee of $9,300 payable in arrears on the last day of the payment period with monthly installments of $775 effective July 1, 2010. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second from, who was that, please? Oh, Mr. Schaefer, Commissioner Schaefer. Any discussion? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change their vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty-one, yes, motion passes.
Item L-2O, A Resolution Authorizing a Grant Agreement with Regional Transportation Authority for Relax and Ride Program. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor be authorized to execute a grant agreement with the Regional Transportation Authority, a copy of the same being attached here too as Exhibit One, and incorporated herein by reference as if set forth herein at length verbatim, for the provision of transit services between Nashville, Davidson County, and Murfreesboro, Rutherford County, by which Rutherford County will receive service benefits for a period beginning July 1, 2010, ending June 30, 2011, at a cost of $11,557. Resolve this seventeenth day of June 2010. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second, Commissioner Black. Any discussion? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty-one, yes, motion passes.
Item L-2P, Special Purpose Fund Budget Amendment and Revenue Adjustments. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the Special Purpose Fund be amended as follows: revenue adjustments including increased revenue in the amount of $3,292, and that results in an increased undesignated fund balance in that same amount. Resolve this seventeenth day of June 2010. I move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Second, Commissioner Sandlin. Any discussion? Please cast, excuse me, Commissioner Daniel.
This is the Special Purpose Fund. This is the Special Purpose Fund.
Let's see here.
Special Purpose.
So noted.
I'll tell you, we don't need spell check with Commissioner Daniel.
Special Purpose. Did I get a mo, I have a motion, do we have a second on that? Who was that?
Yes.
Commissioner Sandlin, second. Any other discussion? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change their vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty-one, yes, motion passes.
Item L-2Q, Drug Control Fund Budget Amendments and Revenue Adjustments. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the Drug Control Fund be amended as follows, with revenue adjustments, notice there are decrease in revenue, which results in a decrease to the undesignated fund balance of the Drug Control Fund of $250,100. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Motion, second from Commissioner Cook. Any discussion here? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change their vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty-one, yes, motion passes.
Item L-2R, Development Tax Fund Budget Amendments and Revenue Adjustments for Trustees' Commission and Transfers Out. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the Development Tax Fund be amended as follows: revenue adjustments, trustees, commission, transfers out, and notice there is a net increase to the undesignated fund balance of $91,437. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second, Commissioner Jordan. Any discussion? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change their vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty-one, yes, motion passes.
Item L-2S, Debt Service Fund Budget Amendments with Revenue Adjustments and Trustees' Commission and Development Tax Revenue. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the General Debt Service Fund be amended as follows: we have revenue adjustments and the trustees' commission, and also this adjustment at the bottom of the page for development tax in the amount of $30,000. Looking at the increased revenue, the decreased revenue, and the increased expenditures for the trustees' commission, the General Debt Service Fund has a net increase to their undesignated fund balance of $651,600. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second from Commissioner Jordan. Any discussion on this? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change their vote, you may do so now.
Record your votes.
Twenty-one, yes, motion passes.
Health and Education Committee, there is no report. Property Management Committee, there is no report. Public Safety Committee, there is no report. Steering Legislative and Governmental Committee. Mr. Rogers.
Thank you, Mayor. The commission may recall that back a few months ago, we had requested from the legislature a private act amending our ordinance concerning the legal services provided by the county attorney. The legislators obliga, obliged us in that, and they have amended our private act and sent that back to us, and now must be ratified by the full commission by a two-thirds vote. So we have a resolution here tonight adopting the new private chapter in private act. At the same time as we are included, excuse me, included in this resolution is also a, an adoption of the legal services agreement that had been reviewed by the full commission again several months ago, and again by the steering committee here more recently. So with this resolution, we would be doing both, adopting the new private act and adopting the legal services agreement. So this is the resolution. Whereas the General Assembly has enacted Private Chapter 56, House Bill Number 3972, Private Acts of 2010 regarding legal services for Rutherford County. And whereas a legal services agreement has been previously unanimously approved by the steering committee and is recommended to the full commission for adoption. And whereas a two-thirds vote of the legislative body is required to approve Chapter, Private Chapter 56, House Bill Number 3972, Private Acts of 2010 with certification of the same to the Secretary of State. And whereas a copy of Private Chapter 56 and the legal services agreement are attached here too and incorporated herein by reference, as if set forth herein at length verbatim. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Rutherford County that Private Chapter Number 56, House Bill Number 3972, Private Acts of 2010, and the legal services agreement be and the same hereby are adopted by Rutherford County, and the officials of Rutherford County be and are hereby authorized to sign and enter into said agreement. It is further resolved that the county clerk is directed to send a notice to the Secretary of State of the State of Tennessee of the ratification of the private act as required by law. Resolve this seventeenth day of June 2010. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Second, Commissioner Coggan. Discussion, Commissioner Williams.
As I read this, private chapter that was approved by the state in Section Four, it says that this act shall have no effectiveness unless it's approved by two-thirds vote and certified to the Secretary of State. And I would suggest that we cannot do both of those here tonight. So we would need to separate these two issues because the word "and" is in there before this shall have no effectiveness. So in essence, we cannot vote on and approve the attorney contract until we voted by two-thirds majority and this is certified but to the Secretary of State, which will take two or three days. So until that is done, the old private act is still into effect until all that's been completed. So I would just suggest or make a motion that we separate these two and come back with the second part of it in, after this act has been completed as Section Four says. So I make that motion that we separate these two.
Well, we have a motion on the floor, we'll have to deal with that motion somehow.
I make a motion to amend, well, I mean, it's just.
It's routine, you send it to the Secretary of State, so it won't be effective until it is sent back in, but that's the effective.
Once we send this to the Secretary of State, this, none of this goes into effect until they actually sign off on it.
Well, I understand that, but we are voting on something that's not in effect until after it's sent to them.
You can't send it in until you vote on it to have them certified.
We don't have to vote on both at one, they can be separated, is my only point.
But the private act won't be effective until, I mean, the agreement until July the first anyway. So, let me see the private act. Well, this private act is effective as soon as we have a two thousand, two thousand, two-thirds vote, and we certify, send them a certified letter saying we've had a two-thirds vote, that's when it's effective.
But we can't do that, we can't do that, it's not effective until that has happened. I just think putting both of them together on the same thing is just maybe a minor issue, but that's what this document says, and as Mr. Cope has said so many times to us, one word a lot of times means a whole lot in these issues. So that would just be my recommendation, or if I got to make an amendment or whatever they do, that we separate the two and vote on them on separate issues.
Well, we need a specific amendment to the motion, the motion on the floor to adopt the resolution that Mr. Rogers has read to us here, and we do have a second.
Well, I make an amendment that we separate the private act and vote on it separately.
Do we have a second to that amendment?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Daniel. We'll have to change the language in this resolution substantially to. Commissioner Jordan.
Well, I don't see, personally, I haven't read this thoroughly, I don't see a problem of breaking it up, approving one and approving the other thirty seconds later, but two speakers got up earlier and had minor questions about this, and I thought if we followed one with the other, we could at least consider changing a word or two, or even send it back to steering. I don't know how big a time constraint we're in on this, getting, I want to get the private act approved, I would think for sure tonight, and then just, I don't think they're asking a lot, just, just a word or two here and there, and I would like to see that ironed out, whether we can do it on the floor here tonight, and I think if we break it up, then we would have the opportunity to maybe address these two concerns here.
Okay, we'd be happy to answer and address those two issues that they made, they are fairly easy to address. We have the motion to adopt this resolution, we have an amendment and a second that's going to split this into two pieces. Once we adopt and approve the private act, the private act requires, the part of it is a legal services agreement to be put into place when you adopt that private act. So we have to, we can do it in two separate motions, but we sort of have to do them concurrently, it appears.
The legal service agreement is our document, am I not correct? The questions I'm talking about are, we can adjust that, whether it be tonight, or even I guess we can bring that up next month, adopt this is, and then go back in amendment, can we not? I mean, I'm asking for clarification. The private acts, all we've got to do is go to Nashville for, but the legal service agreement, we can make minor changes amongst ourselves, can we not?
I mean, that's correct, but the private act itself refers to a legal services agreement that has to be put in place for it to be an effective, for the private act to be valid.
Well, I probably wouldn't even have a problem approving this is, as long as it was sent back to steering to address these two issues, if we have the opportunity to come back and if there's, we don't have to go to Nashville to make a change to legal service agreement, am I correct?
The legal services agreement can be changed at any time.
At any time. So we could approve it all tonight, and then just have these on the agenda for steering.
You can do that.
And look at it next month.
Certainly.
Yeah.
You always have the ability to change the legal services agreement, assuming we can get both parties to agree to it. All right, I don't know, does everyone understand where we are with respect to this amended amendment? Hold on, Mr. Williams, Mr. Jordan would like to speak.
Mr. Mayor, I guess I need to ask my chairman there, are we not, steering not meeting one week from tonight? Is that a set meeting? We had a conflict.
Problem management is not going to meet that night.
All right, so if we had to look at it again, I mean, that's one week from now, I'm not posing one way or another, I'm just saying we could do that. And then we're meeting now, I don't know, can we do that piece of business on the 28th? We can, can we not? So that's just, just a few more days. It's not like we're going to have to wait till the first Monday, then go all the way into August before we have to deal with this again. We could do it that way.
And then have the full commission approve it at.
That morning, yes, sir.
Right.
I'm just, I'm not proposing that necessarily, I'm just saying that we could do that. Thank you.
All right, we've had this discussion about, and we have a motion and an amendment to that motion on the floor. Mr. Williams.
Just one comment, we have a legal agreement in place right now, that we, that Commissioner Hall made the motion back in September, and it was to continue in place until we got something new in there. So it's not like we don't have one, we've got that in place. So it's not like we're without one at this point.
We have no agreement with the county attorney, no written agreement, we have a private act that describes.
I mean, the county attorney said that he would go along with the existing. I mean, the county attorney said that he would go along with the existing details that we've been going on with until this was approved. So I mean, I don't know why a few more days or a week or two makes that much difference in that, because we do have things in place, so we're not in a void is it. But I'm just trying to get, if we're going to follow by the rules, I'd like to get everything correct and that says "and," and that's my only point.
You have anything else to say, Mr. Rogers, before we...
No, I mean, I agree with, I don't see any difficulty in separating these out to have two separate votes on the private act and then the legal services agreement. But I do believe that we, that the issues raised in the letters can probably be addressed and considered tonight. I'd like to see both of them passed tonight. I certainly don't mind doing it in two, but I'd like to see, I'd like to see both of them come to at least to a vote tonight. Then we can, if there are some other concerns that come up after that, we can take them up and make any amendments that we need to do next week.
Okay, well, let the record reflect it in that last large paragraph there that it says, "Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Rutherford County that Private Chapter Number 56, House Bill Number 3972, Private Acts of 2010, strike and the legal services agreement." That phrase there, "and the same hereby," is adopted. That's what the resolution is right now that's on the floor. Commissioner Farley.
Mr. Chairman, I mean, I'm sitting here reading this Section 4. I mean, splitting them, one, have one of the other, but the way I read this, "This act shall have no effect unless it is approved by two-thirds vote of the legislative body of Rutherford County, period. Its approval or non-approval shall be proclaimed by the presiding officer of the legislative body, which is the chairman, and certified by the Secretary of State." There's a vote...
Certified to. It's not by. They don't do anything.
Certified to. That is right. Certified to, the State, the Secretary of State.
We send them a copy of what we execute.
So there's two things. The vote of two-thirds, and then you as chairman of the county legislative body has to send a letter to the Secretary of State. The Secretary of State signs it.
Now, the Secretary of State's already signed it. We send this letter.
Right.
Our resolution that we approve and I sign it and they file it. That's it.
I see that the vote happening and then that happens, it's approved. The way I see it. I'm not following you on that, Commissioner.
Let's let Mr. Cope respond.
Let me just clarify. Certainly, you do it however you want to, but there is no act for the Secretary of State. When you adopt a private act by two-thirds vote, as Commissioner Farley just said, if the mayor announces it's adopted or it's not adopted, then we send in this document, you mail it in to the Secretary of State. He doesn't do anything. There isn't any further action. You're just filing it with the Secretary of State, just like you file the minutes of the commission with the county clerk's office. There isn't any further act. Now, if you want to split them up, you can split them up. That's your call. But it doesn't, it doesn't require any action. There's nothing else to consider once you vote on this and he sends it into Nashville. It's done. There's no further action.
What'd he say? Is anything else, any, you've heard the explanation. I mean, it's pretty simple. There's nothing to, the state, Secretary of State has no other action to take if you approve this resolution. But we have an amendment to split this into two pieces. We'll have to deal with the amendment. All right.
Attorneys, Mr. Chairman, did the attorney say we could go ahead and address these tonight, pretty simply?
Sure.
And go through those? I think we could address it all. Yeah.
All right, we have a motion to split these into two pieces, and I told you what that does to the resolution, though we're going to vote on that. All right, is any other discussion? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone that would like to change their vote, you may do so now.
Okay, record the votes.
Fourteen yes, seven no. Motion passes.
All right, now we have the motion on to adopt the private act, to approve the private act. That's on the floor now. That's all that's on the floor. Is any discussion? All right, you're ready to vote. Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, anyone that would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty-one yes. Motion passes.
We have adopted the private act. I will thus certify the private act by signing this resolution that we will modify that only includes the adoption of the private act. Now, Mr. Rogers, would you continue, please?
Thank you, Mayor. There were two issues raised by, I think, Ms. Allen and Mr. Schrader. I'll take Ms. Allen's question first, and it had to do with paragraph... Section 5, paragraph, yeah, G. It says, "No member of the governing body of Rutherford County or no other officer, employee, or agent of the same who exercises any functions or responsibilities in connection with carrying out the activities and work to which this contract pertains shall have any personal interest direct or indirect in this agreement." The question was, what does that mean? And my answer to that is, and I'll certainly let our county attorney speak to that, but my answer to that is it simply means that none of us can have a personal, for example, none of us, no employee, no agent of the county can have a personal interest in the contract. None of us could serve as the county attorney. I'll turn it over to Cope.
I think that's correct, what Commissioner Rogers has said, and we would likewise say that no one else who's an official of the county, if there was a secretary, for instance, or a clerk who worked in one of the other offices, they couldn't be part of this contract. They could not receive any compensation under this contract. They cannot be affiliated with the contract in any way. So it's to avoid any conflict that anybody who would be voting on this would stand to gain money or some other compensation for services rendered through the county attorney's office. So that's correct.
And then the second issue raised, I think, Mr. Schrader, was the language that's contained in the legal services agreement that talks about, and I believe it occurs in three places, the fact that other counsel may be recommend, may be recommended by the county mayor and approved with the advice, approval, and consent of the county attorney. That appears in Section 3, in the second paragraph. It appears in Section 5H. And it appears in Section 2, Roman numeral 2. C, the last full paragraph there. It is understood that the county commission, upon recommendation of the county mayor, with the advice, approval, and consent of the county attorney, may place certain cases or legal matters that present unique circumstances such as a conflict of interest or the need for particular expertise with outside counsel. I think Mr. Schrader's comments in his letter and tonight here during the public comment period were that he believes that that takes away from the full commission and out of the hands of the commission, the ability to approve the placement of cases with an outside counsel, that it places it more in the county attorney's hands as far as, at least as to the advice, approval, and consent of the county attorney. I think that candidly, that's probably right on its surface. The mayor would recommend a county attorney, or excuse me, an outside counsel to us. We would either reject or approve that, and that would also be subject to the consent of the county attorney. So I...
Actually, there's two different sort of term periods that this is talking about. During the first two years in which I'm still serving as county attorney, if the county mayor recommends outside counsel, he would consult with the county attorney, and of course, then the county commission would have to approve it. Candidly, I can say to you, if the county mayor comes to me and says, or I come to him and say, "We don't need to be handling this case for whatever reason, if there were some issue to come forward," then certainly I assume the county mayor would recommend somebody, and I suspect that's when it would come up and the county commission would vote to hire somebody outside. The second time period would be in the last two years, when if you have had a staff attorney at that time, we don't have any authority at that point to approve or disapprove. At that point in time, the county mayor has the right, subject to your approval again, to put any case with the staff attorney or outside counsel as you see fit. So it's two different standards there that would apply depending on whether it's the first two years or the last two years if you have a staff attorney in place.
Jim, in that first two years, and what if you disapprove? The mayor approves, you disapprove. Are we at a stalemate?
First of all, it won't come to the commission until he and I agree, or else we're out there not able to hire an attorney. So there are multiple attorneys, competent, qualified attorneys in every field. In the event he has a conflict of interest, or in the event he doesn't feel his staff is qualified, or I don't feel his staff is qualified, I would diligently provide one or two or three alternatives to the Mr. Cope's firm, and surely we would agree on one before I would come to you with a request.
Candidly, I think if the mayor came to you all and said, "I've recommended that we hire XYZ. I've talked to Mr. Cope. He refuses to agree. I recommend it." I don't think we'd be in this contract any longer, and you got a right after two years to terminate it, so I think that's what you'd do. If I wasn't doing that, I can't imagine you wouldn't say that.
Well, that's kind of where I was heading, while I go, because if the mayor come and said that, he's recommended, and you say, "No, we're not going to do it." No disrespecting to you, my thought would be, we need to fire you. You know.
Well, during that first two years, but after that, it would be over.
Right.
I can assure you that's not going to happen. We've not had that problem working with Mayor Burgess, and I think, you know, we're going to try to make sure we have the correct legal staff and availability for you.
Commissioner Schaefer, and then Commissioner P.
Well, in those three places, why can't we just change the verbiage and leave it with the advice of the law firm and leave out approval and consent?
Because at that point, as Doug, and it's been through the Steering Committee three times now with that, and I said before, I've made substantial concessions throughout here on all of this, significant savings to the county, and if you want to start tinkering with it, then I've got a lot of things I would like to change. I'm willing to live with this. This wasn't my proposal. It was your proposal. I'm willing to accept it, but I don't, I'm not willing to do any further changes on it for reasons I've already stated.
Commissioner P.
I had a similar question to Commissioner Schaefer there, and last thing, Jim, that I want to say is question, you know, you or your ability. I think you do a good job for us under some extremely tough situations, just as we saw tonight, and I want to tell you how much I appreciate that. You know, the main concern I've had, and I think RNA's concern, is that we're still adhering to what we had back in the past where the Board of Commissioners actually had say over whether we actually hire an outside attorney or not. And the way I understand this, we do have that power. You know, you can come to us with a recommendation, and we're basically can say, "No, we don't want to hire an outside attorney." If that's correct, I'm okay with this too, because that was my sticking point, first time we brought it up, and has been in all the conversations that we had. And that doesn't delete the power of the commission as far as being able to hire attorneys outside of what we normally do. So if my understanding's correct there, we can still say, "No, we don't want to do this," or "Yes, it's okay to hire a attorney." Is my understanding right? We still have that authority under this agreement the way it is.
Yes. Whatever the recommendation is, it's absolutely up to us whether we accept it or not. We can reject it and install another one.
Commissioner Williams.
Well, I'm going to make a motion that we remove approval and consent from this just on the surface that it gives Mr. Cope the power to veto what the elected officials may or may not want to do. Now, whether this is a deal breaker, I can't see where it would be. We've never had any problems about, that I know of what he recommends, but to give him the power to veto something on this, I just think that defeats the whole purpose of us being elected and being up here. So I'm making a motion that we remove those where it appears in here and we can get his advice, but not to have approval and consent, because that's strictly a veto power in there. That's my motion. To amend.
Is there a second? Motion is died for lack of a second. Do we have a motion to approve the agreement? Commissioner P., Commissioner McAdoo, second. Any other discussion? On the approval of the legal agreement that you have before you, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote.
Twenty yes, one no. Motion passes.
Next is our Public Works and Planning Committee report. Commissioner Jernigan.
Public Works and Planning Committee's got five resolutions tonight. The first one will be to approve stormwater management ordinance. Second will be to waive building permit fees for May 1st and 2nd, 2010 flood victims. Third one is plan for litter and trash collection grant from Tennessee Department of Transportation on county roads, authorizing and accepting said grant. Fourth will be approved speed limits of 30 mile an hour on G Road and 15 on Jake's Avenue. And the fifth one will be approved two drainage easements in Kingwood and Trace. Whereas pursuant to federal mandate to comply with the National Pollution Discharge Elimination System Permit and Application Regulations 40 CFR Section 122-26 for stormwater discharge, Rutherford County is required to adopt a stormwater management ordinance. And whereas Rutherford County, Tennessee originally adopted its stormwater management ordinance December 16th, 2004, and whereas the attached stormwater management ordinance, a copy of said being attached here to Exhibit 1 and incorporated herein by reference as if set herein at length verbatim, contain revisions required by the overseeing authorities. And where it is in the best interest of the citizens of Rutherford County to approve said ordinance, now therefore be resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that Rutherford County hereby adopt the stormwater maintenance ordinance as amended and attached here to resolve the 17th day of June 2010. I so move.
Second from Commissioner Cook on the stormwater ordinance. Any discussion? All in favor of this, please say aye. Are there any opposed? Motion is unanimous.
Whereas Rutherford County experienced flooding of historical magnitude May the 1st and 2nd, 2010, causing damage to 688 properties, including 14 totally destroyed, 161 with major damages, and 175 with minor damages. And whereas Rutherford County in effort to support and assist in the efforts of rebuilding said properties, would propose to waive building permit fees for affected flood victims. Now therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that building fees normally collected by the Rutherford County Building Code Department be waived for any Rutherford County resident affected by the May 1st and 2nd, 2010 flooding on permits requested through September 30th, 2010, resolve this 17th day of June 2010. I so move.
Second by Commissioner Hall. Any discussion? All in favor of this, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous.
Resolution authorized submission of an application for... Resolution authorizing submission of an application for litter and trash collection grant from the Tennessee Department of Transportation and authorizing and acceptance of said grant. Whereas Rutherford County intends to apply for the affordability grant with, from the Tennessee Department of Transportation, to be executed from July 1st, 2010, to June 30, 2011. Whereas the contract for the grant will be impose certain legal obligations upon Rutherford County. And therefore be it resolved that the county mayor of Rutherford County is authorized to apply on behalf of Rutherford County for a litter and trash collection grant from the Tennessee Department of Transportation, and that should said application be approved by the Tennessee Department of Transportation, the county mayor is hereby authorized to execute contracts or other necessary documents which may be required to signify acceptance of the litter and trash collection grant by Rutherford County, resolve this 17th day of June 2010.
Motion, and a second from Commissioner Sparks. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimously carried.
Whereas the Rutherford County Highway Department is responsible for certain county roads in Rutherford County, Tennessee, and whereas TCA 55-8153, authorize the Rutherford County Commission to prescribe speed limits as it may deem appropriate on any roads being maintained by Rutherford County, authorize it to erect appropriate signs. And whereas the Rutherford County Highway Department has recommended in question the following speed limits with appropriate signage designated county roads. G Road, 30 mile per hour, Jake's Avenue, 15. Whereas the Public Works and Planning Committee has recommended said speed limits be imposed for the safety and welfare of the citizens of Rutherford County, Tennessee, and the maintenance and preservation of these county roads and persons traveling thereon. And therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners as follows, that the maximum speeds limits being deemed appropriate and reasonable by the Rutherford County Commission upon recommendation of the Rutherford County Highway Department pursuant to TCA 55-8-153R as follows. G Road, 30 mile per hour, Jake's Avenue, 15 mile per hour, resolve this 17th day of June 2010, I so move.
Second by Commissioner Jordan. Any discussion on that? Commissioner Schaefer.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I just got to empathize with the poor guy that lives at the end of Jake Road, that the road runs into his driveway, about three quarters of a mile to a mile down there. It's a long hike in the afternoon after he gets home from work at 15 miles an hour. I just can't support that part of it.
Any other discussion? All in favor of this, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed?
No.
Let's see. Let the record reflect it. One, two, three nos there, Mr. Clerk. Let the motion carry.
I might comment on it.
Yes, sir.
I'd just like to say for the people old that may not know Jake's Avenue, it's a narrow road. A lot of old folks live on it. Houses is close together. A lot of people walk down through there. They've had two or three hit in the last six months, and all they're trying to do is slow people down. It's not a half a mile long. Whereas pursuant to the private act, authorizing the Rutherford County Highway Commission and Superintendent to work on public drainage easements and provide for the maintenance of public drainage easements, requires the county legislative body establish an official list of recognized public drainage easements. The attached Exhibit One are the easements recommended by the planning department. And whereas the Public Works and Planning Committee has approved the list of public drainage easements as submitted by the planning department. And therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners, that the county commission approve the attached list of public drainage easements. Exhibit One is submitted by the planning department in accordance with Tennessee Code, annotated 54-903 and 54-904. The public drainage easement shall be the only public drainage easement which shall be worked upon by the Rutherford County Highway Department, resolve this 17th day of June 2010, I so move.
Second from Commissioner Sandmann. Any discussion? All in favor of this, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Is there any other business or announcements that come before this body, Commissioner Sandmann?
Yes, sir. The 61st Annual Blackman Barbecue will be held at the Blackman Middle School over on Blaze Lane. And so we invite all the politicians and those who want good barbecue, come on out and have a big time. That is Friday, June 25th. And I do have tickets available right here tonight, so I know you all want one. So come on by. And it'd be from 5:00 to 8:00 o'clock on the 25th of June, which is next Friday.
All right. Thank you very much. Any other announcements? If not, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.